All right, welcome everybody. We will call to order the Grand Forks City Council Meeting for Monday, August 5th, 2024. Roll call please, Marine.
Weigel.
Here.
Osowski.
Here.
Berg.
Linsky.
Here.
Friedos.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
And Bean.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Item 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item 1.3, Mayor's Announcements. Just two announcements today. Unfortunately, they're both condolences with two recent losses that had a lot of attachment to the city. So first of all, on behalf of the City of Grand Forks, like to offer condolences of the family of Mel Carson. Mel retired after 43 years of public service with the City Assessor's Office. So he was hired all the way back in February 1969 and worked through May of 2012. So anybody that would have came through that office would have ran into Mel at some point during that period, serving as the City Assessor for a long time, 22 years from 1990 all the way through 2012. And he just had his funeral today. So keep his family in your thoughts. And also, if you followed the news, Pat Owens had also passed away. She served as the Mayor of Grand Forks from 1996 to 2000, but she was a fixture. She worked for the City of Grand Forks for 33 years prior to that. Just a great lady, someone that had reached out to me when I'd gotten into office and just a really all-around great person and was really well-liked with staff. So just keep the two of them and their families in your thoughts and prayers. And then one other announcement. Tomorrow is going to be the Grand City Celebration that's put on by the Police Department each year. There'll be a lot of different public safety vehicles, equipment. You're going to see SWAT team usually has their toys out there as well. So that's going to be downtown here on South 3rd Street from 5:30 to 8:00 PM tomorrow. Great event, you know, free event for families to go out to and always fun interaction. So if you get a chance, come out tomorrow night and check out the celebration, the Grand City Celebration. That's it for Mayor's Announcements. We'll move on to two awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations.
2.1, Presentation of the Griggs Award.
All right. The Alexander Griggs Award recognizes exceptional personal effort to preserve Grand Forks' built and cultural history. It is named for Captain Alexander Griggs, Griggs, our city's founder. Honors are selected by the Grand Forks Historic Preservation Commission, and recipients' names are added to the perpetual plaque that hangs in council chambers. It is my privilege as mayor to present the 2024 award to Mr. Greg Vittel. Mr. Vittel's selection recognizes his many contributions to preserving the city's and county's history through his activities as a former board member and president and current volunteer with the Grand Forks County Historical Society. He was instrumental in the restoration of the unique Lusstran House, now located at the Mayoral Museum, and a member of the Antique Automobile Club, which maintains the historic gas station also on that site. He is a retired exhibition coordinator/register for the North Dakota Museum of Art and a longtime proponent of promoting historic preservation on campus and throughout the city. Most recently, he played a key role in the creation and development of the Veterans Memorial Park. His expertise in art and design is well illustrated in that park's wall of honor. It is my pleasure to present this award to Greg Vittel and to congratulate him for his successful leadership and community achievements in many key activities that exemplify the spirit of the Alexander Griggs Award. So please, sir, come up and we'll formally present you with the plaque and give him a round of applause.
And thank you, everyone. This is a totally unexpected honor, and I'm really surprised to have my name added to that long prestigious list of many people I've read about and also worked with. And this is just amazing, and my mother is going to be so proud. Thank you very much.
And 2.2, Presentation, recognition of the 2024 interns.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Haley Rosasson, and I'm an HR manager for the City of Grand Forks. We are in our ninth year of the internship program. This is a 50-50 cost share with the University of North Dakota program. And this year, we were able to hire 11 great interns in many different city departments. And tonight, they'll just give you a quick update of what they worked on this summer.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Leigh Hodgson. I'm originally from Grand Forks, North Dakota, but I'm currently a junior at the Carlson School of Management at the University of Minnesota, where I'm studying finance and business law. This summer, I helped the Finance Department with everything that goes into building the 2025 budget, including all of the presentations to council and the binders you all received last meeting. I also helped edit and format two new reports to the city this year, the PAFER, which is the Performance Annual Financial Report, and the Budget in Brief. I am extremely grateful to the city of this opportunity and even more grateful to the Finance Department for being so welcoming. So, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and President Sandy, members of the City Council. I'm Mike Bonstall, the Budget Officer, and I supervise the intern in the Finance Department. And just first of all, I'd like to say thank you to all you for continuing to support this program. On the budget side of things, it's been a lot of help just to be able to get the budget material to you all in the fashion that we're able to do it. And every year, it just seems to get better and better, including more documents that Lilly spearheaded this year. So thank you to you and to you as well, Lilly. Thank you.
Thank you, Lilly.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Morgan Thielvar. I'm originally from Langdon, North Dakota. And my first two years of school, I went to Lake Region State College where I played volleyball. I completed a year of college and high school, so I'll be a senior at the University of North Dakota this year where I'm pursuing business. During my internship in the assessing department, I've kind of been a jack of all trades. I've done a lot of different things. I've done permits, looking for different construction permits. I've done a lot of pictures and uploading them into our Vanguard system. And I've done a lot of field work going out with the appraisers and doing assessing itself. So I'm super grateful for this opportunity.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Council. Tammy Lizer, City Assessor. We have been extremely excited to have Morgan with us this year. This is our second year with an intern. And each year, over the past two years, we have really worked hard to include them in our process to understand the real estate industry. It gives them a lot of knowledge for today as future careers. It gives them, I think, beneficial information as to if they're going to be purchasing homes. So it's been a really great experience. She has, like she said, she's done a lot of things for our department, everything from administratively to helping our appraisers kind of take some of the load off on the things that they're going on in their everyday lives with reappraisal. So she's been a great asset, and thank you for continuing with that intern program. It's been a great help, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and other City Council members. Thank you for letting me speak today. My name's Daniel Musselman. I'm currently a senior at UND. I'm from Grand Forks, around the area. So I'm a music major and I'm also a civil engineering major. So I did an internship this summer with civil engineering, and I got to work on the ADA Transition Plan, measuring those curb ramps from all throughout the city. So a lot of driving around, but I enjoy that kind of thing. So I got to look at some other projects with some other engineers, look at some stormwater data, and overall, I really enjoyed my time here, and I'm very thankful that I had the opportunity.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the Council. Christian Daniels is one of the Assistant City Engineers here at the city. Daniel covered what he did pretty well here, but I just wanted to throw out that the work that he did on the ADA Transition Plan was something that I thought might take us, you know, two, three years of the intern program to get done. He had it done in six weeks, so it was kind of a scramble. They figured out, okay, what else can we have Daniel work on? So really grateful that he spent his time here with us this summer. Really grateful to you all for keeping this program going, so we can keep bringing in good students like Daniel to help us out in the engineering department. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Kira Younts. I'm a junior at the University of North Dakota, going into information systems and communication. I've had the pleasure this summer of serving as the Public Administration intern for the Public Health Department. It's been a really great experience throughout my internship. My main project has been streamlining and designing a plan to store policies, which does sound kind of boring, but it's actually been really great. The team that I've worked with throughout this experience has been amazing. And then also, just getting to learn what all the Public Health Department does has been really cool to see how many services that they offer the citizens of Grand Forks.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the State Council. I'm Shaylee Miller. I'm the Communication Strategist at Public Health. Having Kira has been such a great opportunity. Not only has she brought this super bright, positive, like, energy and fresh perspective to our team, but she also has, like, this amazing dedication to producing high-quality work. So her, like, effort to build up this policy process and organization is going to have, like, long-term impacts for us, which is really awesome. So thank you all for supporting this opportunity, and thank you, Kira, for your awesome work.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Precious Data, and I'm a first-year student in the MPA program with the University of North Dakota. I've had the privilege of being an intern for the Planning and Community Development Department. And this year, I've worked on a downtown inventory, just looking at the residential spaces we have in Grand Forks and also the local businesses we have, and just putting all that in a spreadsheet and comparing them to the last eight years. And I've also worked with the University Parks Neighborhood on having this fire hydrant painting project and just approving all the applications that come from the residents. And I've also done a lot of taxes just all around, just working with a lot of departments. And I would say, this has been a very wonderful experience, and I'm so glad to be a part of it.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmember. I'm Anna Edwards. I'm the Planning Manager with Planning Community Development. Precious has worked on my division side, but also quite frequently on the community development side of our department. Like she said, everything from the downtown inventory. She's done some stuff for downtown parking that we'll talk about later tonight. And even on the planning side, she's had the unique experience of updating a billboard map. So she's touched a few different things in our department, some different one-offs. She's also had some CDBG Community Development Block Grant, Davis Bacon interviews, which is a unique perspective as well, to have direct conversations with contractors. We're very proud and happy. She's been a great asset to the team and the department. It's given us a perspective in things that maybe we could be better in terms of our own internal communications, what projects prioritizing, different things like that. So grateful to you for the program and grateful for having her too. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Megan Schill, and I am studying business analytics and accounting at Quincy University in Illinois. This summer, I had the opportunity to work as a data analysis intern in the Public Safety Answering Point. To reiterate, I'm extremely grateful for this opportunity to see such a unique aspect of our city and get to know the behind the scenes of something a lot of people know about but don't understand. Through my work in PSAP, I have gone through the data on types of calls, number of calls, and worked to create new reports that will help the center manage their resources and plan their time, especially with the new system they're creating. And I have also worked to do some public outreach with rebuilding their website and creating promotional materials for hiring.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. This is our fifth year utilizing the interns, and I'm very grateful for this program. Each and every year, I look forward to them working with us as they bring a fresh perspective to us, looking at how we operate. And it gives us a set of new eyes into our own operations. Megan has done a great job, not just with data and analytics, but also, like she said, promoting our department and bringing some fresh ideas to that. So just to reiterate, this program is very fruitful for everybody, and we continue to learn about ourselves as well through it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name's Aria Singh. This year, I'm going to be a senior at the University of North Dakota. I majored in criminal justice. And this summer, I was privileged to be a community service officer in the internship program here at the PD. Some of our duties we were responsible for were parking downtown, animal control, as well as community engagement on the Greenway. Through this internship, I gained a new insight in dealing with people, deescalating situations, as well as acting in a position of authority. I truly enjoyed my internship and had a great experience, and will pursue a career in public safety in the future. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Camden Van Wetchel. I'm a junior here at UND. I'm originally from Argusville, North Dakota, and I also am a CSO intern. Aria kind of hit it there for us, but yeah, we did culture of service here with the police station, and we've had a great time. Lots of friendly people around the city that we've got to interact with, and I just want to thank you guys for the opportunity. Appreciate it.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Brittany Reister. I am a junior at the University of North Dakota, and I am majoring in forensic science and criminal justice. This summer, I was the criminal analyst intern at the Police Department. My main focus was the intelligence bulletin where I gathered information and intel on things that are happening in Grand Forks, and I organized it into a bulletin that was sent out to the officers and different agencies. I also had the opportunity to learn and be involved in the day-to-day activities of the detectives. I was able to go to crime scenes, watch interviews, review camera footage, and do inventory during search warrants. It was a very rewarding summer. I gained a lot of experience, and I loved the opportunity to get to know the detectives and the officers at the Police Department and just see how much work and effort they put into every case, and it was a very eye-opening experience for me.
Mayor and City Council, again, we'd like to thank the city for giving us this opportunity. We've always jumped at the chance, started with two, went to three interns. Actually, great recruiting for us because we've hired a bunch of them, and I'm hoping they're listening behind me because it gives us a chance to see the quality of work that they do for us, and many of them actually are employed by the city now. So I think that's money well-spent, and we'd like to thank them for their efforts and you for the opportunity.
Thank you. All right, Haley, is that the group? Well, let's all give them a round of applause. And I think Chief really hit it on the head, the last remark there. I mean, this has been a great way to hire and to find employees for the city, and we get a chance to give them a dry run over the summer, and they can decide if this is the type of work they want to do. But we've really got some really great and qualified employees from this, so hopefully they'll consider the City of Grand Forks as you finish up with school. So, thank you. All right, we'll move on to item three, public hearings and second readings of ordinances. We have none, so we'll move on to citizen comments as they relate to action items. Is there any comments this evening, Ms. Dorsted?
No one in person for this one. There was one online comment, which was emailed out to all of you and posted on the web.
All right, thank you. We will move on to item five, action items. Looks like we're going to pull 5.2, 5.3, 5.9, and 5.10. Was there any other items that council wanted to pull? Let's give Mr. Venus a moment online as well.
Nothing additional, dear.
All right, so we're looking on the consent to approve items 5.1, 5.4, 5.5, 5.6, 5.7, and 5.8. So we'll be looking for a motion to approve.
I move approval.
Motion to approve of Ms. Osowski. Do we have a second? Second from Ms. Berg. Seeing no further comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. So we've got 5.2, 5.3, 5.9, and 5.10. Ms. Dorsted.
5.2, reimbursement resolution relating to Project 8824, the Ultra Indoor Sports Aquatics Complex, AZAC. And I can speak to this matter. We did update you at the committee, the whole, regarding this project and the financing involved. What I did not have attached at the time, so we wanted to pull it just for your review. As we won't be financing until we're into the project, we just need, per IRS regulations, pass this reimbursement resolution so we can draw back and reimburse ourselves. So that's what you have in front of you, and that needs City Council approval.
Thank you. And I think as we look at interest rates and hoping that interest rates fall, as we look at the bonding, I think we're going to want to push back as far as we can and hopefully let alone, at less interest cost as the project moves forward. Obviously, important to get reimbursed as expenses come up. President Sandy?
Do we have an estimate as to how much that reimbursement might be?
So yes, President Sandy, Mayor, members of the City Council, what we had presented at the committee, the whole, was that our maximum borrowing capacity is $100 million, and that is what this is stating up to, that amount.
Any further comment or questions, Ms. Dorsted? All right.
If there's any further questions, all this does is it allows you to go back 60 days prior to the resolution. We just need to make sure we have this approved sometime in the timeline so we can go back and reimburse ourselves. It doesn't commit you to.
President Sandy's question, I think, was, what do you expect? Do you expect there to be significant sums that are going to this prior to the bond being issued?
So what we expect is that once we have final schematic design, we'll go for RFP, and we'll look at some interim financing. So it'll be more on an as-you-draw basis. So, no, but this makes it clear, when you sell the bond, the permanent financing, at that time, you're going to be reimbursing ourselves for the interim financing. So at that time, we're going to reimburse ourselves, once we do the permanent financing in place, to pay off the interim financing.
Okay, and that obviously makes sense because you wouldn't want to take the full amount out and pay interest on that when you aren't drawing it down. Okay. All right. We have a motion. Got a motion by Vice President Weigel. We have a second. Second from Ms. Berg. Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
And then 5.3, award contract for 2025 health insurance.
Good evening.
Please.
Mayor Bachansky, Council President Sandy, and members of the council. I bring before you today a request to review the 2025 health insurance request for proposal results and approve the recommended action by the Pension and Insurance Committee to accept Health Partners' proposal for a 0.9% rate decrease for health insurance coverage for 2025 with a 12% rate increase cap for 2026. Included in this report is the breakdown of proposals received by Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Dakota, Health Partners, Sanford Health, and United Healthcare. The final proposals received reflect a Blue Cross Blue Shield renewal rate of 9.9% increase for the current plan design, while Health Partners came in at a 0.9% decrease for 2025 and the rate cap of 12% for 2026. As Health Partners has submitted competitive bids over the past three years, the city invited Health Partners to meet with employees this past March to provide further information on their plan and network and to answer questions and concerns employees may have regarding switching plans. Health Partners provided an excellent presentation and did a great job of answering questions. An email was sent out to all employees with the RFP results and the intention to recommend switching health insurance providers. I've not received any negative feedback at this time, with the exception of what I heard at the Pension and Insurance Committee meeting. There was a concern expressed regarding several mental health providers included on our disruption report. Health Partners has committed to working with local health providers to establish contracts targeting mental health providers first, and will hit the ground running as soon as an agreement is in place. With that brief description, are there any questions on the staff report or recommended actions?
Thank you. I know we have Mr. Weigel and Ms. Berg on the Pension Insurance Committee, so I don't know if you have any other feedback. I know mental health and just access to services was definitely discussed, and ensuring that Health Partners is going to follow up and get with all those providers, and hopefully some of that work has been done, some of those conversations are had. But, Mr. Weigel or Ms. Berg?
I'll just add real quick, Mayor. I'm glad we continue to have this conversation. I think as we move forward, we should continue to put this out to bid and let a competitive process take place. I think it's saved the city a lot of money. It's saving our city employees money, and it's saving our taxpayers money. So I think it's a good thing that we should continue to do moving forward.
Ms. Berg?
I appreciate the employee rep group reaching out and expressing what they wanted to see and connecting with us.
Yeah, and I would definitely agree with Mr. Weigel's comments and Ms. Berg's comments. I think as we do continue to. I think as we do continue to bid this, I think it's important, but I don't also, we're not looking at flipping and flopping back and forth every year because there's a cost to that, and people, you know, having to change, get reimbursements and new processes is not going to be efficient either. So I think, we hope that Health Partners will continue to be the, the best bid, but if that circumstance changes and it prompts a response, we'll be ready to do that, so. Any further questions for Ms. Pavett?
I'll move approval.
Got a motion to approve from Vice President Weigle and a second from Ms. Berg. She's beaten you guys to it today, so. All right, seeing any further comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
5.9, downtown, or downtown on-street parking changes with revised information attached.
All right, Ms. Ederson, Ms. Proctor, please.
We're going to tag-team this one tonight. We had a great public input meeting here last week, and just discussing thing with the, did the public input meeting, we have the Parking Management Theory, which is employees and residents park in the lot for the day, customer visitors on-street for quicker transactions. The staff request before council is the on-street time zone changes on the northeast corner of downtown. The public input meeting had roughly 20 folks attend or so, and the feedback that we heard there was the negative impact and displacement that some will experience if the times were to go from all-day parking to, to hour. General support for the consistencies on time zones downtown overall, throughout downtown, and then, of course, to always do better in the ramps, which is, continues to be common feedback as we incrementally try to tackle that. And what we've done here since the committee of the whole meeting is just put together, in addition to the on-street time zone changes, some different solutions that the city can provide to help ease parking in the area. We've determined that additional on-street parking could be added to North 4th Street and North 3rd Street. Currently, we have two lanes of one-ways going on both of those streets. We could convert one of the one-way lanes to parking and still maintain adequate drive-through abilities. So we're exploring that diagonal parking on 3rd because it's a much wider roadway, parallel on 4th Street just due to the narrowness of the street. Looking at some street maintenance schedule changes which coincide with those, just so that we get the parking during the day, during the week, as much as possible, which is our pinch point downtown at the moment. Then we also have the city employee lot. We're creating capacity for others in that lot by relocating city vehicles to an alternate location. We're going to maintain a one-stall employee at this point in time, but we'll continue to evaluate that utilization to see if any more can be opened up. Recognizing the need that parking has and the commodity that it is, we want to be good partners, and if we're not using it, opening it up to others to be able to have access to it. Changing the lot time in that lot to be open for the public after 3:00 PM. Currently, it's permitted only through 5:00 PM. Hoping that opening up a little earlier will have some frequent transutilization as well. Also, the long-term plan for that lot, it is a half-block lot now, would be a prime location for a future ramp, preferably wrapped with commercial to help support it and its long-term viability. We've done improvements to the Riverboat Lot in terms of safety lighting at the moment, just adding lighting to existing utility poles, just to help remove some of the shadows that were on both sides of the floodwalk, creating some uncomfortableness. And then we've also prioritized snow removal for the sidewalks in this upcoming winter year. And then with the enforcement, we are proposing dedicated downtown parking with the interstate parking budget request. And what that ramp potential might look like are some good examples. The Roberts Commons in downtown Fargo was recently built a few years ago. Commercial wrapped around with a parking behind. And then the other example is Boulder, Colorado. Again, the idea being the commercial in front, parking behind, so that you have that vitality and that commercial foot traffic wrapping the parking. So with that, I have to thank Jill. She took quite a bit of parking phone calls. I took a fair few. I have to admit, I think she might have taken more this week. So we've had some great advocacy and partnerships through this one, and so I'll let you have that too.
Mayor and members of council, I'm Jill Proctor with the Downtown Development Association. Yes, I'm done talking about parking, hopefully after tonight with your support. We did a lot of outreach, trying to get the, the greater downtown neighborhood perspective on what they would like to see, and it was an overwhelming response that they would love to see some consistency in the parking. We have struggled for a number of years with the on-street parking, with there not being any turnover, less spots for customers. The businesses have voiced that concern for a long time, and there's this perception downtown that we don't have enough parking. So we're excited, obviously, to all the development. I think that's something that, that we should be celebrating, and then some of it comes with a little bit of pain along the way, where we have to make some changes, we have to make some decisions. I think that positioning ourselves though going forward, having some consistency around what we're doing downtown as a whole is most important for downtown, especially as it continues to grow. A lot to the north, we'll see development on the south side again in the coming years, and trying to set that kind of tone going forward, that this is an exciting time, and we're going to have these obstacles, and hitting them head-on is kind of the perspective that we take. We're excited to work with the city going forward on some of the suggestions that they made. Something so small as signage is potentially something that could change, and we know that that won't cater to everybody, but it's, it's something that we can make downtown a little bit more inviting, a little bit more welcoming. If we start using some of these spaces, I learned over this process, there's nine lots I wasn't even aware of that you can park in after 5:00 o'clock, and so we're excited to promote some of those, get some fun video footage of those. We like to do quirky campaigns. So we're just really excited at the opportunity or the potential to partner with the city moving forward on this.
Thank you. I'll just make one comment first. I mean, obviously, this isn't set in stone. This isn't how it will be for the next 10 years. There's going to need to be likely some tweaks. I think that on an individual basis, they're going to have to look at different things, but try to have an overall plan. It's obviously not perfect for everybody. There's people that have different needs, but we've got to start with some plan, and I appreciate the ideas of signage. I think utilizing the, the ramp to its maximum is going to be important too, but it's no easy task to try to sort of wrangle all the variables in this. So I appreciate the work done so far, and we will, if this gets approved, obviously, try it out and get feedback and, and see what tweaks need to be made. So, thank you. I'm going to open up to Council, Ms. Osowski, please.
Yeah, could you tell me where you suggested the diagonal parking on the map? Can you bring it up and point to it, please?
Yep, so North 4th Street. So what we're proposing with the additional parking would be one block north of University Avenue. So the parallel parking that exists on North 3rd Street. Kitson is here, Kelly's would be here, the diagonal parking right across the street from them, and then the parallel parking on 4th Street. Kidwell's Cleaning, I believe, is the one on the corner, if that helps with orientation.
And then you mentioned something about permitted parking until 3:00 PM, which.
So the city.
I would like to see it, I guess, uniform. I mean, if we're going to do this two-hour parking, I would like to see it nine to five all over. I, I don't think that switching times is going to.
So we'd be proposing consistent on-street time zone changes, so two-hour parking. I believe it's currently like seven to five or eight to five. And so that would be on-street. The change to 3:00 PM was specifically the city employee lot to allow that off-street parking site to have up a little bit, free up a little bit sooner.
Right, and we just make it even across the board, though, just like at 5:00 PM? So it's not, you know, this lot you can park in at 3:00. This is off-limits. I, I mean, I, I do appreciate how, like number, the number 20 that's on right by Franklin, I do appreciate that that was switched to two-hour parking to make it more uniformed in downtown. I don't understand why number five needs to be one-hour parking. Can we not just make it two-hour parking along that entire corner?
Certainly. Our recommendation for the one-hour was to help with the different businesses that potentially may be coming in there and trying to attract those.
How many businesses are in there right now?
Well, I don't think it's open right now, but.
So, so are they, how many units have you rented? Like, how many?
Ah, I think we're north of 25 now, apartment units.
Okay.
If you could maybe want to step up so everybody can hear that's watching on, in TV land. Over the other side there, yeah, there you go.
North of 25 units now residentially, working with four commercial tenants, so.
Do you think, though, that, like, number five on this map, I, I mean, is it, would it be a problem to just have it all be two-hour parking for you?
I don't think that's an issue.
Okay, I, I guess I would like, if we're going to go ahead with this, I would like to see it more uniform just all around, so there aren't spots, you know, that are two-hour. I understand the 30-minute, and I think that's really important for City Hall, but I think that we should just go all around two-hour parking, in my opinion.
I don't know, is there any council members that have any problem with that? Would you be changing where that five spots, so the numbers, is the number of spots there with the, on the magenta pink? I don't know what color you want to call it. Would be changing that to yellow? Is that, anybody opposed to that in the council? Extra hour. All right. Well, we got that solved. Anything else for council? You're, you're going to have to, you know, that line's going to have to redrawn, just so you know. I don't know, I think there's a cost to that, but hopefully someone can absorb that amidst their daily duties. All right. Ms. Lunskey?
You mentioned interstate. Are they going to be in charge of parking, parking tickets now downtown?
That's our proposal with the 25 budget, is to have them have an additional employee that would do both on-street and off-street parking enforcement, in addition to some janitorial things. Right now, we have a service gap in the ramps on evenings and weekends, and so we have one employee doing janitorial Monday through Friday, 7 to 5, but we do have a service gap on the weekends in the ramps, and yet we're, some of our highest times downtown are, are weekends, right? And so being able to pair that additional employee with enforcement helps different things that the CSO wouldn't be able to assist us with.
Okay, so tonight, we're not voting on that.
That would be part of the budget discussion, but not part of the on-street time zone changes.
Thank you.
But we do recognize the need for additional enforcement.
If I could just add too, please, I think that was overwhelming, some of the comments that we got to is the enforcement. If the interns would hear, I would applaud them again because it was incredible to see the amount of enforcement that we had over the summer, and I think the perception from the downtown businesses, they'd like some consistency on that. And then we heard a lot about parking ramps. We're definitely in support of interstate parking, taking over some of these responsibilities. When we have somebody that's present on the weekends in the parking ramps, it changed the entire perception. There was a lot of talk about how, you know, maybe we don't want certain employees going into the ramps, and, and anything that we can do to, to keep a presence in there and keep it clean and lit and maintained, we'd hope would be a, definitely be a priority.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Colonel President Sandy, and then we'll go to you, Mr. Friedos.
Sorry, thank you. Mr. Friedos, how robust is Interstate's parking enforcement capabilities?
So currently, right now, Interstate parking handles all of downtown Fargo's, on-street and off-street. They do also have some private lots that they enforce, so, as well as many other communities. They're very, have a heavy presence in the city of Duluth as well. Those who I'm more familiar with, they have contracts all across the Midwest. I'm very confident they have the ability to do it and, and manage it. We'd have our supervisor through Fargo, which gives us some cost savings here at the city, which is also kind of what helped contribute to their RFP rankings and things like that. So they do it elsewhere. I, I feel faith that they could do it here, too.
Would we, they have the capability of having a trial period? I mean, once we make all of these changes, there's going to be, I'm guessing, an ample amount of people that are parking in the wrong place at the wrong time. And I don't really feel excited about, like, the Olive Ann, right? We work so hard to get people and businesses to come to our downtown, and then we pass out parking tickets like they're candy. So I'm hoping that we can avoid that.
The goal would be, I guess, compliance, and those first couple of weeks of compliance is going to be tough, but that's where the consistency that Jill was referring to comes into play. We've had interns this past summer that have had some significant impact to the Olive Ann and different things, but now it's going, again, it's going to drop off when we lose those interns for the year. And so if we can level that out and have just general enforcement and compliance, that's a win for everybody. I do think having a dedicated parking enforcement person would help maintain that consistency.
The University of North Dakota has a system where they actually track your license plate and then give you a warning for your first time, your first offense. Could we implement something similar?
Yes, we could.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Friedos, please.
Just real quick, where does this leave overnight parking? Because I got a lot of calls and people were concerned, you know, if you go downtown, you may not want to force people to drive home.
That's a great question, and maybe Jill's more familiar with that one, because I, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. But yeah, I, from our perception, this wouldn't impact overnight parking. I know that there was some suggestions on making it so that it did, but these changes wouldn't change anything about our current overnight parking. We would just put them in better spots for overnight parking.
Perfect.
Mayor Bucinski and Councilmember Friedos, overnight is more of a maintenance driven. So what we're talking about here is more kind of parking enforcement, moving out. When you get after, you know, 1:00 onward, then it's more snow or a street removal for those operations, and so that's done by, for those reasons, and I think generally ticketed by the, the Police Department.
Okay.
And, and just in the downtown, one thing we're going to change is, in the downtown area, there's some frustration. So streets are Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and it's, I think, the street signs say Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday. So we don't do, I'm sure we've done it in the past, but normally, we don't do maintenance on Saturday. So we're going to change those signs to Monday, Monday through Wednesday, and then Tuesday, Thursday on the avenues, and that'll help clarify, and I know there's issues. You're, you're at the bar hotel too, and should you drive home? No, but we still have either snow or, you know, just regular street sweeping through there too, so.
Copy that. Thank you.
And we do have, so the City Hall lots, as well as the ramp, we could certainly be better about marketing and being that education piece, whereas the partnership with DDA comes in. You can poke, park there overnight and weekends. It's the weekday overnight parking that really gets to be the pinch when the employees come back on the week, but Friday and Saturday evenings, they certainly could park there all weekend and just move it before Monday.
Perfect, thank you.
Again, there'll be some pain points, but some warnings ahead of time will hopefully eliminate some of that initial.
Ms. Osowski?
Yeah, I guess my last question is, is over on, by 3rd Street, there's a little bit of 30-minute parking. Why is that there, and can that be two-hour parking also? I don't believe that's a city building. I believe that's a gun shop.
Correct. I couldn't tell you why that's 30-minute. If it's still 30-minute, that came from an old Google Map photo.
Can we switch it to two-hour then, just to be more uniform?
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, so you got the two changes?
Correct.
All right, so if there's no further comments, we're just going to be looking for approval of this with those recommended changes as part of the final.
I move approval.
Okay, let's go, Ms. Osowski first, Ms. Lunskey with the second. Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
5.10 is the 2025 mayor's budget with revised information attached, including some email correspondence that was attached today.
All right, thank you, Ms. Dorsted. If you want to pull up the presentation and kind of go through, I think we've got a few presentations, and we can kind of go into conversations after that. So I'll probably just have you kick it off, let us know where we're at, and then we will ultimately open up to council.
All right, thank you. Mayor Bucinski, President Sandy, members of the council. So I was up here on July 22nd presenting the mayor's budget to you with a half-mil reduction. We have had some adjustments since that time, and the attachment material is reflected with those changes as the mayor worked with council leadership and staff on these changes. So what I plan to do is go through these changes, hit some highlights in the staff report, and then we'll open it up for questions. Before I get into that, though, and I know it was highlighted when the interns were up here, but our intern Lily Hodgson and Josh Odegaard in our office, I do want you to take a look at that budget and brief document that we've attached out there. I am very proud of the work that they did on there, so I think it's going to be a helpful tool for the, for the public. So take notice to that, because I'm pretty proud of what they did there. So, starting with the mayor's budget and the changes from when I was up here on the 22nd, so we are proposing a 2.93 mil reduction. What this means is we'd have .49 mils reduced in the general fund, a quarter mil as previously planned from the special assessment fund, .19 mils from the library and two from the airport. The changes to get there, the, the .19 reduction to the library is actually an increase about the rate of inflation for as far as in dollars. So that's where that mil reduction is coming from, and, and we've communicated that with the library. The .49 mils, the general fund, what we got to with that. library. Uh, the 0.49, um, mils, the general fund, uh, what we got to with that, uh, previously, uh, we made some changes on our assumptions of state aid, um, we're not being quite as conservative of what I was, when I was up here on the 22nd, so we do have a 2% decrease budgeted, uh, and then that offsets 70,000. We were able to reduce the, the mils, the equivalent share there. Uh, we do also, with that plan, use some more loan and stabilization cash, um, and, and now and in the future, uh, to come to this, um, additional mil reduction. And then, of course, using some of that fire reserve cash, um, using that all, um, by 2028 is the projection. Um, in the end, you can see at the bottom of this slide here, how we get from the current 96.37 mils, we had the proposed half-mil, and we're, uh, looking at the additional for a total mil reduction of 2.93 mils, uh, which would bring our levy down to 93.44. Uh, the mayor asked us to put this together, just a comparison, as you can see, with the four major North Dakota cities, um, for what's funded from the city, for the airport, uh, the airports, the library, and the EDC. That's for your information, as, as you, uh, review the information.
I think, I mean, the biggest one there is the airport, and I think it's, you know, important to point out, the airport does have significant reserves, um, and this really just gets us in line with what the other, you know, airports in the state, um, are, are getting from their taxpayers. Um, I went back, I tried to go back as far as I could, went back 17 years to find out how long has that been at the state. Uh, we went back 17 and stopped, so I'm assuming just forever and ever, or at least for a long period of time, the airport has taken the maximum allowed by the state of North Dakota. Um, this will get us back, um, in line with the other, where the cities are paying. And I think, um, you know, more importantly, Fargo's looking at going from two down to zero, and they're gonna use those two mils to help fund their general fund. We're cutting these two mils and giving them right back to the, the taxpayers, so they're gonna see that directly on their, on their tax bills, which I think is really important. But we're still gonna work forward to try to grow commercial service. I think that's, that's important. I think the focus needs to, needs to be there, as we see, what does the average citizen, you know, get out of the airport? It's not about, you know, private hangars and flight schools and, and all these things that you can't afford, but I think, you know, getting better-priced flights on, on Delta and more options is what the average taxpayer, um, can benefit from, and you're seeing much greater benefit, um, from the tax dollars in that respect, in, in Minot, Bismarck, and Fargo, certainly. So, we're gonna continue to work on that, so I think we can do, do both at the same time, but just so you know, those two mils aren't going to fund our general fund like Fargo's plan, and we're putting them right back, uh, and giving them back to our citizens. So, thought that was important to note.
I found it interesting, too, as we were working through this, the difference between us and Fargo, is the, the airport, although airport levy in Fargo is separate from the city of Fargo's levy, they need the city of Fargo commission approval in order for them to levy. So, it's a little bit different, whereas ours is right embedded as part of the city levy. So then, with those changes, um, is, according to the assumptions we have here, uh, we have, uh, a projection shown here where we do spend down cash throughout this six-year, we do spend down that fire reserve. Um, we've been fortunate enough over the years, you hear me, every year, we're gonna use this, but we don't have to, because, uh, revenues have performed better than budget. Um, but that is incorporated in here. Um, we do have one-time capital uses coming as part of this that you'll hear, and you have a, um, attachment with this, to use some of those general fund dollars for some important needs in our streets, um, and police. Um, but in the end, as we project this forward, uh, we do have growth figured in here, holding the mils level after this 2.93 mil reduction. Um, but in the end, we still stay within or above the 18% minimum threshold, uh, policy of a balance. Um, what I don't want to do is trend where the negative or the use of cash grows over time, and we continue to spend down, but the good thing is, when we do this, um, we do project by the end, we're, we're trending a little bit better, where, um, we're not using as much cash as we were in the beginning. So, that's more what I look to with this six-year projection as, as we go forward. What we don't have incorporated in here is any new positions, so if there is a need in a department, I don't have any additional FTE, other than absorbing those six officers fully in 2026, um, that come off of that grant.
I think we're just intending to do more with what we've got, and that's, you know, that's a challenge when you have workload issues, but, uh, there's probably potentially gonna be some staffing needs as it, as it moves forward, but, uh, for now, we're gonna hold, hold where we're at.
In the end, then, as you can see with this, uh, mil levy comparison from 2024 to 2025, and how that works out, just as I had presented to come to that 2.93 mil reduction, what that means in, in the end, um, we equate this, uh, 2.93 mil reduction, um, the question had been asked, you know, with, uh, what is that in terms of increase, taking into account the valuation on a residential home? So what that comes, when you figure in that average overall valuation increase on a residential home, would be 1.5% increase, um, per $100,000, it would be 55 cents a month. So that's what this equates to as far as in dollars. So, on your, um, median value home, take that number times 2.93, basically. Um, but just going through the staff report, and then I'm gonna open it up for questions, the mayor's budget, uh, as we had, uh, covered, really focuses, it really does focus on people, public safety, infrastructure, and quality of life. So it continues, um, what he had started, um, last year with some quality-of-life initiatives, for instance, in the Economic Development Fund, using some dollars, um, over a 10-year period of time, for the Children's Museum. We also have incorporated in here, uh, a purchase of five acres of land from the GDA, reimburse the city, and then the GDA would operate a lease with the Children's Museum. So that's the, the quality of life that's, uh, highlighted in here. It does, as I state, include a total of 2.3 mil reduction. Uh, in total, then, after that, um, that would bring the levy down to 93.44 mils. Um, what that would equate to on a median value home would be roughly $79, uh, per month that you pay for city services. So that would be to include all your general fund-funded, uh, departments, as well as, uh, library, the two mils for the airport that would be remaining, um, transit, dial-ride, and, and everything included, uh, on this slide before you. In total, then, with the general fund, it would bring a $50 million budget up to 52 million, which is, um, uh, included in your packet of material. Overall, your general fund makes up about 17% of your total budget. That total budget is, um, just under 300 million. Um, 299 million, um, this is, as comparison to 2024, 296 million. That number really is gonna vary year to year, just depending on capital projects. So, um, right now, we've got the large wastewater treatment plant, improvements and, and, uh, expansion, that's increasing those dollars. If you were to compare it to two years ago, the number would be much smaller. That's your primary driver. When we look at net of internal transfers, because we're moving, um, from possibly one fund to another, um, those numbers compare 271 million in '25 compared to 274, uh, as it was in, in the 2024 budget. But some of the highlights, if I start with the general fund, um, like I said, would go from 50 to 52 million. Um, 79% of that budget is your public safety, um, engineering, uh, public health, um, public safety, um, salaries and benefits, it does include the 2.5% step increase, as well as 75% of that ECI component. Um, the vacation accrual would be smoothed out, um, as recommended by Human Resources and Administration, and also a floating, uh, holiday as to not increase costs, but bring it to the total, uh, as the state holidays has. Uh, the biggest change, um, that was the first revision to the mayor's budget, was due to the savings that we see in the health insurance, due to changing providers to health partners. Um, that basically keeps it pretty flat with the 2024 budget. Um, it is still a fully insured plan, and Pension Insurance Committee reviewed and, and approved, um, that had been brought forward to you today. We do fund, uh, capital replacement. Um, I already went through, um, what the total budget means, um, from the 274 to 271 net of internal transfers. Um, we do have included in your packet, some one-time capital needs that we're taking care of, uh, with, uh, cash balances. Um, we already went through some of the 2163, uh, for quality of life. The other thing I want to point out, as was discussed on the 22nd, was using, uh, economic developments, uh, for capital maintenance of those parking ramps. We're gonna take that, care of that. We're gonna start setting aside, uh, build up to $100,000 a year, um, for capital and capital reserve, to try to prevent future spikes in that budgeting. All other programs, um, are included, um, in 2163, as previously have been supported, um, and we've listed those in your staff report there. Um, Alara Center, you had the joint meeting, they do show a loss for, uh, 2025. That's primarily due to, uh, convention center, um, upgrades, and that, uh, capital is included. Um, all the CIP, uh, is included on the pages listed. We do have some recommendations, and we'll follow up with public hearings and, uh, studies regarding public transit dial-ride, as far as those fares, um, but we're looking at going from $1.50 to $2 per ride on transit, and three to four on dial-ride. Um, overall, the utility rates, uh, we are looking at an overall residential bill on the average increase for a 4,000-gallon user of $3.54 a month, or that would be 4%. Uh, that would include a new drought mitigation fund, um, to support the River Valley Water Supply Project, um, and a user of that, and that would be figured at 4 cents per thousand gallons. We have discussed, and will do more to analyze credit card fees and passing on an appropriate fee to cover our cost on that, and we've also talked about franchise fee for that, uh, high-volume electric user, um, discounted rate, and bring that to the base of 2%. Um, once we discuss tonight, uh, make any, uh, changes that council would wish, we look to bring forward, uh, preliminary approval tonight, uh, that we will give to the county auditor by August 10th. Um, tonight, we also want to set the public hearing for September 16th. Um, that will be included on a, a mailing from the county that'll go to all households, um, that will show them when our public hearing is, and, um, what that estimated tax bill would be. Um, also, in speaking with Ms. Nelson, the county auditor, she has a listing of properties that applied for the $500 property tax credit. That will be reflected on those estimated tax statements as well. So, hopefully, um, most people see a decrease. With that, I would open it up for questions. We did have a number of questions. Thank you, President Sandy, for, uh, your email with questions. We did, um, do our best to respond, and we've attached that, um, to your material as well. But with that, um, Mayor, and I don't know if you have anything else to say, but I would open it up for questions.
Well, first, Ms. Thorstad, why don't you go ahead and sit down, so you can, uh, go through and answer the questions from your chair, so you don't have to stand up all night as we work through this.
All right.
I just have a, a couple of points. Um, looking at that general fund increase, you're looking at about 4%, the way it sits right now, um, projected. I think Fargo was 11% and West Fargo, just looking at our I-29 partners, West Fargo was about 8%, so I think that's coming significantly lower there. Um, and, um, as we look at the residential increases on, on property value assessments, at 4.7%, um, 4.33 mils would be the, the rate we would need to cut for that to be flat, um, on the city, cities portion of that. So at 2.93, we'd be roughly about 1.4, um, mils away, um, as it stands now, because people, I think, you know, you, you look at the mils might go down, but if your valuation goes up and takes away the difference, you know, you're, you're wondering if you're getting ahead or not. So, uh, that's where it sits as of now. So, with that, um, President Sandy, would you like to go first or last? We usually, uh, usually sit in the weeds, and you like to go last, so I'll give you the, the choice today.
If, Mayor, if I could just point out one more, uh, thing, uh, I meant to just highlight the fact that tonight, uh, and for, uh, new council members as well, tonight is preliminary approval. Um, between now and final adoption, you were allowed to decrease from this point, but you cannot increase after what you approve tonight. So I just want to make sure I clarify that.
And I do think if we're, if there's cuts that are gonna be made, and that we're, we're gonna try to work through it, I think it's important, because the proposed tax statements go out in September, and, uh, you know, if you're planning on cutting more, it'd be, probably be nice to have that reflected in the proposed, rather than, um, in the final, because usually, you're gonna read, you know, your first one and, and kind of base it off of that, and if it goes down later, you're not as, probably as interested. So, uh, just my thoughts.
Quick question.
President Sandy.
Yeah, um, Ms. Thorstad, so the, uh, the health insurance, the savings in the health insurance based upon previous budget is already included in that reduction of 2.93 mil?
Correct, correct. So, what actually happens is, it's basically what we're paying now. But when we started this budget process, we estimated an increase for health insurance.
15%, right.
So then, when it's, um, we kept it flat, basically, with 2024 budget. We had incorporated that with our half-mil reduction on the 22nd, um, and now we've done, as I pointed out, the further mil reduction. So that is incorporated in that savings.
Great, thank you. Um, I said, Mayor, just generally speaking, um, we've got a couple things that are important, um, least important in my mind. Um, I think Grand Forks taxpayers, like all taxpayers, are, uh, how do I put it the right way? That, I think they're feeling the squeeze. I think interest rates being the way they've been, I think markets being the way they've been. I think, uh, just pandemic recovery in general. I've heard from a few people that are fixed income folks, that are having trouble with their property taxes and aren't excited about their taxes going up. Um, I'd like to see us try to figure out how to get to that 4.33 level for a net zero. I do have a couple of ideas, um, but I think it, I think it's important for all of us to share, to share in this, right? Because, um, well, we have a, we have a, a property tax vote in November as well, and I think, you know, we, potentially, what we do today can affect a lot of people and what, how they're going to voice their opinions in November, and I think it's important for us to show that we're thinking about our taxpayers and that we want to, you know, do right by them as best we can. So if we can't get to 4.33, I get it, but at least, I think there are some things in the budget that are worth a discussion, and, uh, at, I'm sure sometime tonight, we'll all have ideas of things that we should increase or decrease. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Did you want to make some of those suggestions, or do you want to wait and hear some, in further input first?
Well, I'm gonna rip the Band-Aid, uh, off right away. Um, the, uh, city share of special assessments, um, we have literally hundreds of millions of dollars worth of major projects, uh, that are planned for our community, and even if we are getting favorable terms on them, where the city's only paying 10%, for example, and the feds are paying 80, and the state's paying 80, there's still tens and twenties of millions of dollars that we have to have the revenues for. Now, only essentially three places where we get funding for our roads. We get it through the feds and the state, through the gas tax. We get it through our, uh, our sales tax money, and then we get it through special assessments. And so, uh, what we have today, the, uh, the split between, uh, city coverage and special assessments is unsustainable, because we, we simply don't have the money. Uh, we don't have the funds, the revenue funds, to cover all of the major projects in the near term, let alone generations into the future. I think, uh, if you look across North Dakota, uh, even take the Fargo Metro, um, we're in Grand Forks, city pays 80%, uh, special assessments pay 20%. Fargo is a 70/30, and West Fargo, it might be hard for people to believe this, but West Fargo is a 30% city, 70% specially assessed. Our 80/20 isn't sustainable. Uh, Mr. Grasser mentioned this probably four years ago, right after we changed. He wasn't afraid to stand and raise his hand and say, "It's unsustainable," and he was right. And, uh, and so although I was part of the push to move to an 80/20, I'll take the blame, and so now I'll beg for forgiveness and say, "Well, what we did, we, we took, we took it too far, and so we need to, we need to back it, back down." Whether it's 75/25, probably more likely should be 70/30, and, uh, I think we should rip the Band-Aid off and start that process for next year, and, uh, perhaps we do it over five years, 2% a year for five years to get us back to that 70/30 stretch. I'd be interested in other people's opinions on this, but, um, for me, we, we have to have the funds to pay for the interchange. We have to pay for, for the other interchange renovation. We have to pay for the underpass. We have to have the money to pay for these things, uh, and if we don't, when they're shovel-ready, we lose out on all the federal dollars.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, and I, well, I think if you just want to put some numbers, too, we did crunch some numbers on that. If you went to a 75/25, that would be essentially a savings of 810,000, I think, but you, you know, you have to consider, and, so you could just double that, if you went to 70/30, just for 2025, it's about 1.62 mil- to 70/30, just for 2025, it's about 1.62 million. But you'd have to decide, you know, is it truly a savings or is that dollars that needs to go towards your city share for future things? So I think you have to balance, you know, what percentage you'd be trying to use in, as property tax reduction versus the amount that needs to stay to fund projects. Al Grasser would say you need 100% of that to, you know, go to help the city share of those special, of those costs. And then that's probably true. But, you know, that would be the debate. If you were to phase it over five years to go down to 70/30 to essentially 2% a year, your savings this year at 1.62 divided by, would be 324,000, just to put a number to it on that front. But I guess, be open to hear other people's. It's obviously, it's hard because you do these projects and the people in that area get the special assessment, and they're not cheap, just like they're not cheap for the side that's paying 80% too. But we have to be able to do things that are sustainable so that the projects can happen. So Ms. Osowski, do you want to add?
Yeah. So I guess I'll make a comment on the special assessment first. I disagree with President Sandy. I think that the people in our community pay high enough taxes, and I understand that there needs to be special assessments, but just raising those, I don't think is helping the average homeowner at all. I would hate, I mean, I consider myself an average citizen, and I would hate to be forced out of my home or if I couldn't afford to pay because of a special assessment on my road. I mean, I live close to U and D, and they keep those roads very nice around campus, so I'm very fortunate. But I, I mean, I'm already paying a special on that. And then, you know, if this would have happened, if we would have changed it to 70/30, I don't, I don't know what I would be paying or, and I think that it's, I think we pay enough, and I think road should be one of our top priorities. You know, I've looked at other things in the budget, and I, there are other things that I would be willing to cut instead of raising our special assessments, like the children's museum. I mean, I'll just come out and say that. I see in the budget on page 461 that we have almost $1.7 million set aside for land purchase of the children's museum. I thought they were donated land. I, I mean, it's really hard for me to sit here and say that, you know, we should raise our special assessments as we're buying land for a children's museum. It's, I just disagree with that, and I disagree with raising special assessments. I understand that we need to be sustainable, but it's just, I feel like we're just moving stuff around. I don't think we're helping anybody by raising the special assessments at all.
Okay. I'll add one point. On the children, on that land, that land was purchased by the city. So the city would just be transferring the land. We're just essentially paying ourselves for the land because it was purchased as part of the project in the past.
So they're not going to pay anything? We're just going to pay ourselves for the land?
Well, they'd be paying a lease. So it would be transferring the land from city ownership to JDA ownership so that it could enter a lease, to then charge for a lease. So the city already owns it, so the JDA would be buying it from the city. So we're not, it's not a new expense. The city already owns it. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I disagree with the children's museum going on our land at all because that's going to end up being something that if they can't sustain, we're going to have to fund. And I would rather keep our special assessments the way they are than start pulling funding to help support an organization that can't support themselves. And, and that makes me really nervous that, I mean, they're not even going to buy the land. They're going to lease it. What happens if they can't pay their lease? Are we going to tear down their museum? Probably not. We're going to be on the hook paying for it. And, and that's what I don't want to happen. I think the children's museum needs to stay on the land that was donated to them so that if things go awry, we're not on the hook paying for it and then having to raise special assessments or taxes or, or anything like that. I, I really think it's a dangerous situation that we're putting ourselves in by putting that children's museum on our land. Maybe if they'd want to purchase the land, but they have land. So I still don't understand that at all. I guess now's a good time to say I'm also against pulling mills from the airport. I think that the airport right now is in the middle of big runway expansions, and they have already kind of thought that this money was going to help them pay for their share of these runway expansions. And so it really concerns me about where it puts our airport if we pull these mills right now. And I'm, I'm not saying that maybe in the future, when they're done with some of these projects, that it might be a good time to look at it. But I, I just don't understand that we're doing, we're spending so much money on the airport expansion to get other airlines in here, and the airport runways are currently under construction, and those are not cheap projects. And now is the specific time when we're discussing pulling mills. Not only that, I think that our airport also brings people to Grand Forks. I, they stay in hotels. They eat at our restaurants. They go to our bars, and that's our sales tax. And I think right now, with the amount of projects that, that we do have going on with the aquatic center, the indoor turf facility, I guess the children's museum still, I, I'm just really concerned about that. And I don't think we should be pulling that money from the airport.
Sales to our taxpayers at that point to help soften the blow? No, they built a $4.4 million CBB so they could have international flights come here that were general aviation. They built a $3 million T hangar, which, which holds 18 privately leased general aviation hangars for general aviation. Did they give any of those dollars back to the taxpayer at that point? No, they made improvements for general aviation. So to hear about the projects and the cost shares now, it doesn't seem that you're really thinking about the taxpayer and what they're benefiting from. So I would wholeheartedly disagree with everything you can just said in complete, in total. It doesn't make sense to me. And I look at a net position balance of $23 million. The city has a, a, as a, a reserve of 13 million. Our budget is $52 million a year. They've got a reserve, unrestricted balance of $23 million with a $4.5 million operating expense. I think it's hoarding cash. If you're going to hoard that cash, I'd rather it be in our citizens' pockets, not sitting in an account earning interest for somebody else. So that would be my stance, and that's the reason that we're looking at those mills. We're going to continue to grow the airport. I mean, that works going on. We've taken over the air service expansion, which was normally something done by the airport. We're taking that over. We spent $430,000 on trying to grow that. So we're going to do both at the same time, but I think it's time that our taxpayer get a little bit of reprieve on their property tax. And that's the reason that that's in there, and that's, I guess that's my stance on it. And City Council will have the, the final say on that.
Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Veen.
Just a quick question, having to do with both what's happening out at the airport and what we were doing. I fully understand and appreciate the capital projects that we've got going with the 47th Street grade separated crossing, 47th Avenue, I-29 interchange, and, and all of these huge projects are coming forward. What I'm, what I'm trying to get with, within, maybe with both of those, we've typically had some type of either six or multi-year capital improvement program when we brought those projects on that kind of looked at where all the money was coming. What's federal, what's state, what's local, and where were we going to get those funds? Maybe I'm forgetting something, so I apologize for that. But do we have those CIP planning documents that looked at how we were planning to do that prior to the budget process we're going through?
No, we do not. And I think that brings up another good point. And Mr. Gossett, you can, I guess, speak to this. Under City Ordinance 200216, that does require the Airport Authority to do annual reporting to the governing body, which is the city of Grand Forks. That hasn't happened in the last four years, at least since I've been here. So we haven't gotten that report from that. So I, I don't know how that's been missed, but that's been under city code, and that hasn't happened as well. Maybe you can speak to where that, that has gone awry or what the actual, I haven't seen the CIP. I guess, Mr. Veen, to ask that question, because it hasn't been reported or presented to us.
Yeah. I think that's what's a little bothersome. I mean, I don't know if they really need 23 million with what they've got planned in the future or not. It would be great to be able to understand what that long-term usage is going to be of that. It would certainly make it easier, I think, to understand. But I also look at that for ourselves, not, you know, with all of our infrastructure projects. It doesn't make any difference if it's a new wastewater plant or what we've been talking about with these major, major street projects. You know, we've gotten, we need to take advantage of those federal funds that are coming in. We can't afford not to with what, with these larger projects. But we have, I'm assuming we've not really shown a document that understands, you know, with, with that money, there comes obligations, and they're financial, as to what we have been planning for that up until now.
Well, and I think we've left the door open. We're perfectly willing, if there's a compelling case that, that money needs to, more city dollars need to go to our projects that's going to benefit the city, then we've left that door open to use economic development funds. We'd love to have the Airport Authority come, explain all that to us, show us how this money is, is needed and it's going to be used. We definitely need to see growth in commercial service because we've got passed by Williston. Williston's passed us now last month, and that's a population of 27,000 people. So I'm right with you on that front. And am I, do I have that right as far as the city ordinance, Mr. Gossett?
Yeah. There's, there were, to report, keep record of all their transactions and then provide a detailed report to honor before the first day of January of each year to the governing bodies that are participating. So it would be both City Council and the county.
So that would be more than just dropping off or end of year statement to the, the governing body would be the City Council?
That's correct.
Okay.
And Mayor Bochensky, if I could, I think the other question Councilmember Veen had, regarding those two major projects, we do have a funding plan for those, whether it's the underpass or the interchange at 47th. And I think the project, when you talk about this 80/20 cost share, those are for more citywide, either street renewal, like chip seal or a mill and overlay that we've seen, or it's a reconstruction of a street. Those are where we switched it to 80/20. Those projects don't have a federal state cost share. So when the city of Grand Forks passed the sales tax for water and roadways, that sales tax on the, on the street side was mainly for streets that go by your house. And we were at a 50% cost share, and we moved that cost share up to 80% as part of that. And so what we're talking about, and what Council President Sandy's talking about, is the funding for those types of projects and not for interchanges because those have federal state. And then obviously, a lot of those, we have, you know, a 20% or less cost share in those. So I just wanted to change those. So I think the thought is, if you move down the cost share, from what I understand, Council President Sandy is saying, if you move the cost share down 2%, instead of having, remaining that at, at 80%, that 2% increment would go towards the general fund, which would reduce the tax levy for the city of Grand Forks. It would increase theoretically those street, citywide street projects that go by your house. So you would pay an additional 2% as part of a special assessment.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Yeah, President Sandy, please.
I, I wasn't exactly sure if Mr. Veen was talking about the city's CIP or the airport's CIP or both. Just for general information, the city's CIP is in our, in our binder, starts on page 499, has all the projects, road construction, water, facilities, equipment replacement, and so on, are all listed in the back of our budget binder.
Is that the one listed CIP? The one that says CIP? It's right, it's right there. It's got its own tab. Mr. Veen, did you not get to page 500 while you were reviewing this?
Yes, yes, I did. I did see that. So, but I wanted to, I wanted to kind of relate the, the two items together because I would hope the airport is doing something similar.
I've seen the airport's six-year CIP. It's been a little while, but I, I'm pretty sure Mr. Reesinger has presented to the City Council in the last four years. I don't, I don't recall specifically when, but I'm, I'm quite sure he's been here. Maybe it wasn't a memorable.
No, not since I've been there. I don't recall. Okay.
As long as we're, as long as I, my microphone's on there, I, I have to tell you, I, I struggle with the airport and removing the mills. I know that they're currently, they're actively renovating the Crosswind Runway. I can't remember the total, not on that one, but it's 20 million or whatever. I mean, it's a big number. And then, as soon as that's done, and the reason they're doing that is so that we can maintain commercial service at our airport because the north-south, the primary runway, has to be completely rebuilt. It's long since passed its lifespan. We're fortunate that the airlines are still willing to land on it, but it has to be done, and which means when the primary north-south runway goes offline, they'll be using the east-west runway. I don't know, the last time, I think the last time I looked at the number for that north-south primary runway was on the order of $60 million. It's probably north of that now. And even at a 10% cost share, it's millions of dollars to, which I know it's higher than that, but it's millions of dollars to, to the Airport Authority. I also think that, and I, I do understand your, your position related to how the Airport Authority has, perhaps it feels like they've been favoring general aviation. I think that they are trying to find a balance. And if you go back and look back in, excuse me, 2008, 2010-ish, oil boom starts western North Dakota, aviation in general, after 2008 was down but started picking back up, the Airport Authority had to make some moves in order to attempt to enhance our airport to attract the general aviation market. Although the university continues to chug along, back then, they weren't, they weren't doing very well. They weren't pumping as much gas as they are today. And the airlines themselves were, were not hitting on all cylinders. So making the investments in general aviation is a long-term play for the airport. They, I don't know if people recall, many of the T hangars, many of the hangars that were out there were vintage World War II. They were terrible. They're tin sheds. They all leak. They're, they're falling apart. None of the business aviators that were flying into our area wanted to utilize them. And certainly, none of the corporate folks that were flying in and out of the area for oil business wanted to rent them. And so I think the Airport Authority made the strategic decision to invest some funds into general aviation, again, for the future, similar to how I think we've stepped up trying to lure additional commercial business. I think they, at the time, were, were looking and recognizing that if they were going to, long-term, going to be luring general aviation corporate business to Grand Forks Airport, they had to make a move. So although you suggest that the four-and-a-half million dollar general aviation hangars aren't exciting, I'd contend that it's great because now we actually have something to sell at the, at the airport that we, we didn't have for years. So I, I think Ms. Osowski and I, I, if we're going to start doing something with the airport, I'd certainly rather slow-play it. And I, I certainly wouldn't do it today when we're trying to show the world that we want to increase our commercial aviation presence. I think it probably just doesn't look good, and certainly not before the north-south runway is done. Once that runway is finished, excuse me again, if they're, if they're still hoarding cash, then I would have no problem with having that discussion. But right now, I just don't think is the right time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. No, and I definitely appreciate those comments. I don't think there'll ever, there'll always be projects, always be capital projects. There's always been those. That's why it's been 17-plus years that they've taken the maximum allowed, allowed by the state. I think they can adjust the, the speed at which they're going to do projects going forward. Looking at the new revenue they're, they're getting even from, they got a lease with Northrop Grumman. That's $180,000. There is ways to drive revenue. Parking seems to be a, a great revenue source. You would think we would be driving commercial because clearly general aviation does not pay to park there. Only the commercial flights do. I still see it, look at the, the taxpayer value. I mean, in Minot, they're paying half of what we're paying. They're paying $591,000. They're getting six flights at Ada Minneapolis, two flights to Denver, and the full suite of Allegiant. So I still look at taxpayer value. And we got to face all of our taxpayers and say, nope, those, those hangars are more important than your tax dollars. I mean, that's still a tough thing for them to swallow because they're not seeing any benefit from that. So we can continue to do that and pay for mills forever, and there'll always be a capital project on the horizon and cash balances that are needed for that. Or at some point, we can make a change. And I guess I, I'm a firm believer that we can, can do both. And with the way the budgets are, there's never going to be a good time, but you have to, as you said earlier, pull the Band-Aid. to be a good time, but you have to, as you said earlier, pull the bandaid at some point. If you're going to move those two mills, you really got a lot of work to do to get to 4.3.
Do I have other ideas?
Well, cutting all the city council pay isn't going to get you there either. I guess we'll open it to any other council members.
Mayor, if I could just, as President Sandy stated, just as reference, the cash flow on those CIP items, the best place to start would be starting with page 515, if you want to go back and look at that.
All right. Any other areas that council wants to look at for additions or subtractions? You can certainly, now if there's any additions you want to make, it would be the last chance to be able to do that. If there's cuts you want to make, I think now's a better time than, than in the future, but we can still make those in the future.
Mr. Mayor, do we know what the city of Fargo raises they got last year? The city employees, anybody have any idea?
I'm looking at Ms. Bouvet if she has.
The city of Fargo got 2% last year and 5% this year.
Ms. Berg has a phone in her pocket with a supercomputer. She was able to look that up.
Council President Sandy, the city of Fargo had a 3.5% COLA and a 2% to 3% step for all employees that were not maxed out on their plan for 2024.
Okay.
And then for 2025, or sorry, it was 2024's data is 4.5%, 2.5% COLA and a 2% step. So for their 2024 budget, it was an overall of 6% for their 2025, 20, sorry, how am I saying this? Okay. So for 2023, which was for their 2024 budget, they had 6% overall. And then for the 2024's budget, they had 4.5% overall.
Okay.
I have to apologize. I thought I had that correct.
So they're getting a 4.5% raise implemented January 1st, 2025?
Yep. So that was for 2024. So for 2025, they haven't approved their budget yet.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
I think I recall them 5% when I watched their Mayor Mahoney give his address. Is what they were looking at?
I didn't watch Mayor Mahoney give his address, but I'll take your word for it.
I know the, the, some city, or some city employees had expressed just some concern with, with transferring the insurance over to a new plan and the city saving money on that and this plan maybe not being as recognizable for other healthcare providers. And there was a suggestion of a desire to raise the contribution from 75%, I believe, to 80%.
Do you have any, do you know what the cost of that would be? I know that, you know, the issue as we think about that is, is there a savings in health insurance? Well, it's the same, essentially flat from last year. So the savings created would only be on what we budgeted, not an actual savings. And I think that's something to discuss, but I don't know if we have the actual numbers of what that would look like. Did you just do some back of the napkin calculations?
No, I'm sorry. I was calculating something else.
Okay.
Mayor Bochensky, on the Fargo raises, I see they're, they're proposed, we'll see what they do this week, is 5% increase for employee raises for the city of Fargo.
Okay.
And they received a 4, I'm still not convinced I cut. They got 4.5% for this year.
If I, if I have this right, Ms. Bouvet, 2023 was 6%. 2024 was 4%. And the proposal's 5% for 2025?
4.5%.
4.5% for this year, 2024.
Okay. Close enough. All right.
Close enough.
Ms. Osowski, do you have anything?
Not yet, sir.
Not yet. All right. She's keeping us in. It is obviously a long budget document. I know there's been a lot of work and a lot of thought. So certainly it's a challenging time because there's a, you know, but now's the time if there's adjustments that you want to make. So.
Mayor, so in my questions that I sent and emailed over this yesterday, at what point can we look at public transportation? And so I'm a, I'm a big supporter of our public transportation system contrary to what some people might believe. I just, I'm not convinced that the cost that the feds require, the costs that are implemented on us because we're taking the federal dollars, I'm just not convinced it's worth taking the federal dollars.
Dale Bergman can probably speak to that. I think that the, running it without the federal dollars would be impossible. So I think it's either don't have it or have it and have the federal dollars. Would that be an accurate statement?
Mayor Bochensky and Council President Sandy, yes, that is a fact. We get 50% of our operating dollars from federal dollars. So like last year now was $1.8 million, the city's local share and probably the 10% that you get from the state for state aid monies has to meet that $1.8 million. Anything that we have as far as capital, we used to be 80/20 on capital for buses. They have now increased that to 85/15 due to the increased cost of the buses. All the rest of the capital items, if we were to buy a lawnmower or a new skid steer or something like that, that's 80/20 on there.
So Mr. Bergman, thank you for that. And I appreciate you being here tonight, as always. Is there any way we can go to more people movers and fewer of the big buses? I know, I know your replacement time is shorter, but the fuel savings has to be enormous.
Actually, I could provide you the listing of all the fuel that we use on all of our vehicles. There isn't really a great deal of difference in it. The larger vehicles right now are averaging between 4.8 and 5.63 miles per gallon. When you start looking at the other ones, they're about eight to nine miles per gallon. So there isn't a great deal of savings that you would have on there. The cost for the vehicles, when you start looking at a cutaway vehicle, they're averaging right now just about $200,000 for a vehicle compared to the larger 35-foot buses that we get now. They're $638,000 for those particular vehicles. The difference comes in what is considered to be the useful life. Useful life is controlled by our FTA folks in saying that you get a cutaway, depending on the type, it's most likely going to be a five-year, 150,000-mile vehicle. You can extend it out, but the responsibility is yours because useful life then becomes an insurance issue that they look at. When you start looking at a larger vehicle, they have had that as a 12-year, 500,000 mile. If you don't make the 500,000 miles, you extend it out two additional years. As we got right now, we're not quite 500,000 on those 2010 models that we're looking to replacing. They're at 489,000 right now. We just had one that went over 502,000, but they're going to be, by the time we order them, it's two years, 18 months to 24 months before you can even get a larger vehicle. So you're looking now, instead of a 14, 15-year vehicle, it's going to be 16 to 17 years before you get a replacement vehicle. Now you start looking at insurance costs. You cross your fingers at the same time that you don't have an engine that goes out. We've got one right now that we're looking at having to replace an engine. We're looking at $63,000 just to replace the engine in a large vehicle. And we just got a transmission that we're putting in for a vehicle for the East Grand Forks side. We have to put a transmission in, a smaller cutaway. This will be the second transmission that they've had in the 212,000 miles that they've got on this vehicle. And that was $4,000 for that transmission.
Thank you, Mr. Bergman. Appreciate it.
I'm going to give you a lot more details that you asked for within the next couple of weeks here for you.
I have, I have a question.
Sure, please.
First of all, I heard you say something about East Grand Forks. Do we pay for their public transportation system over there?
No, East Grand Forks pays their way. There's a cost share analysis that we have to do every year with them.
Okay.
And they pay on the, the amount of vehicles that they operate. And they pay for their own vehicles also.
We just store them or?
We charge them a fee for them being at our facility. We charge them a fee for maintaining those vehicles also.
All right. You also run Dial-A-Ride then, correct? That's.
That is correct.
So how many Dial-A-Ride users versus bus users do we have in the city of Grand Forks? I guess my, my, I support Dial-A-Ride. I think that's really important and I think it's really efficient, you know? But I see these giant buses driving around our town and 95% of the time, there's not even a single person on them that I notice. I mean, I rarely even see people at bus stops. I, I just don't understand how, like, are we even making that much of a difference with these giant buses? Or are we just spending money to collect federal dollars?
No, we're not spending money just to collect federal dollars. That is a mistake from anybody's part. It depends on when you're watching those vehicles. Because I can prove to you, and I'll give you a free pass to ride a bus, I can honestly say right now, there has never been a councilperson except for Mr. Weber who has actually ridden the buses. And we've asked our council folks many times to go out and ride. A particular one that was.
You've never asked me, so.
I will certainly get you the pass and I'll pay for it myself because I don't believe that you should be getting it free.
I, I can afford my own.
I was going to say.
That's not the point. I guess my point is, is like, are we really getting our bang for our buck with the, with these buses? I, I support Dial-A-Ride. I, I do think that we need some sort of a public transportation system. But I mean, even, even if there is someone on the bus, it is never full. I mean, we could get by with the short buses and not, and not giant buses. And, and so are we just wasting money buying these giant buses to cruise around town with that aren't even halfway full? Even if you put five people on those buses, it's, it's not halfway full. I, I just don't understand. So.
We use the larger buses on the larger fixed route service side of it.
But there's still no people on them.
Route 12 is a perfect example. Goes right by your place. That's a shorter bus that we use on that. The only time we'd put a large bus out there is when that small bus is broke down. We cannot get another smaller vehicle. One, it's going by my place too. And I see it, the large 35-foot bus bouncing over the curb. And all I look at is here's damage done to a curb. Here's damage done to that person's property. And then I see the vehicle itself, the damage that it gets done there. As a reminder, the Dial-A-Ride service is a required item when you have fixed route bus service. That's to get those that are unable to get to a fixed route bus stop to get that service.
And I support Dial-A-Ride, but I'm just saying, do we need as extravagant as a public transportation system as we currently have? Because I don't see it being utilized, nor do I even hear about it being utilized. So if, even if we have like cut down on the bus routes, maybe have half the buses, maybe buy cheaper buses, you know, to just have some savings. And then we can continue to have Dial-A-Ride. I'm, I'm not suggesting anything with Dial-A-Ride. I'm talking about our giant buses driving around town empty.
Well, I have to disagree with you in part of that. And part of that is the eruption that you're going to be having. And that's the senior rider part of that service. It is not a required service on the senior rider portion of it. And that has been the overwhelming amount of dollars that we have spent on the Dial-A-Ride service. So you have to look at the two sides. The senior rider service was brought in when I started with the bus service back in.
And that has to do with Dial-A-Ride, correct?
No, it does not.
The senior.
The senior rider service is a separate category. If you look at the federal law, you're only allowed or required to have the Dial-A-Ride service. Senior rider was started when the city council voted for it back in 1995 because the senior citizen center came forward and requested the bus and additional funding to operate that bus.
So they have their own bus?
They did.
But they don't.
The council at the time decided that it was cheaper for them, instead of giving them $1.5 million to purchase a bus and to operate it, that they would be tied under the city of Grand Forks, being we already had the bus service. That's how the senior rider got incorporated. Technically, when you look at it by federal law, your senior rider service, that belongs, the responsibility belongs on the city. That does not technically fall under federal dollars.
Okay, that still doesn't change the number of people that are actually utilizing our city bus system that we have. And I, I'm not talking about.
Yep, but I'm just saying.
About the seniors. I'm not talking about Dial-A-Ride. I'm specifically talking about the amount of money that we are spending on these giant buses that I don't see anybody riding.
Okay.
And it has nothing to do with the seniors. It has nothing to do with Dial-A-Ride. So.
Mayor Bochensky and Council Member Osowski, I do have the numbers. We shared these. So we're estimating 2024, we'll have 273, 273,000 rides on, on the fixed route and about.
So these are just the buses? This is not Dial-A-Ride? Is this part of the senior number then?
Yeah. So then the Dial-A-Ride senior rider is going to, is 57,500, our two estimates. And I think the important part is what we, what we did in the 2000s is like a lot of times happens to say, the, the senior center couldn't sustain senior rider. So we incorporated that in the early 2000s into Dial-A-Ride, which made a lot of sense. It was economies of scale. And so we did that. And we could operate it under one system. That's why we're looking at the age and moving that up. I think the important part is the Dial-A-Ride service is complementary to the fixed route for those that can't ride a fixed route bus. And so they really work together. And certainly what we have done over the years is gone to smaller buses on, on certain routes. On fixed route with the larger buses, they're built to an FTA standard. And I think when you look out into the future, none of us know what the future looks like, but we, the federal government has been very good to the city of Grand Forks. In our metro, number one, we've gotten our transit facility renewed and expanded. That's what an incredible gift from the federal government. Number two, through our senators, we've gotten a lot of bus fixed route replacements over the years. And what I, what I think as, we agree that on certain routes, we don't need the larger buses. But if we're going to make an investment today that's going to last for the next 15 years, not knowing where the federal government is going to be over the next decade, we should purchase a vehicle that's going to last as long as possible. And that's what we've done. And so we're being wise. We're being strategic. And with the senior rider system, we've even incorporated that system into our Dial-A-Ride. And, and, and you talked about East Grand Forks is paying their fair share. The University of North Dakota is paying their fair share. And so really what we have is this really terrific transit system where those entities that couldn't afford to do it themselves, whether it's the city of East Grand Forks, whether it's the University of North Dakota, whether it's the senior center, the city of Grand Forks has incorporated that all into public transportation. And so it's, it's really an incredible story of what we're doing with, and we haven't asked for additional funding. Were you doing that under our existing federal funding, our existing state funding and within our local funding share? So we certainly want to be better, but we're trying, we've really added a lot into public transit over the years. And, and we're certainly open to ideas, but both the fixed route has grown over the years, thankfully because the city has grown, and also the Dial-A-Ride senior rider has grown too.
Okay. I have one more question then, Mr. Phelan. You said about 270,000, correct?
You are correct.
How many individuals is that? Like, how many actual, I mean, I could ride the bus five times a day, but I'm, I'm one person. Do you think we should be shelling out a total of, I mean, I'm including Dial-A-Ride here, 5.64 mils for one person? Because I ride the bus five times a day.
Mr. Phelan, if I might, I think that's a philosophical question. Should we have a busing system or not? I think, I, I was asking the same questions that you were about, should we have the big buses or can we use people movers? And I think if you do the math based upon what Mr. Bergman is telling you, unless he's overtly lying to us, which I don't believe he is, if we're only getting five years and a couple hundred thousand miles out of the people movers and their 200,000, or we spend 630, so three, you get two replacements, yet you get 18 years. And although we are paying almost twice as much in fuel over, over the lifespan, it still doesn't pencil out to go with the smaller people movers. So, and not only that, but a bird in the hand, if we can get the big buses and run them, and run them well, I think ultimately it, it makes sense to have a whole bunch of, if you want to have a busing service, it makes. it makes sense to have big buses running around town empty.
I guess that's why I'd like to know how many actual individuals within our community actually utilize the busing system. I mean, we're talking about cutting mills to an airport that haul a lot of people, but we won't even touch our public transportation system. And I'd like to know just how many individuals actually utilize that.
Councilmember-
You're looking for unique riders. Do you have the data on unique riders and the bus services?
We cannot give you unique riders. All we can do is tell you that it's an adult. We had one of our council people that asked the same question. They wanted to know how many females took the bus to the mall. It's illegal for us to even give you that. We can only track that it's an adult, a student, a child, university student, because the university is paying their fair share. That's all we can tell you.
So you have no data on-
We have no data on that.
I would like to see some, if you could, maybe try to get some for next time, next year. I would appreciate that.
We'll do the best we can on that portion. I cannot guarantee you that because we get guidelines that we have to follow with the federal government, and those are one of them that we cannot tell you.
I'm not asking for the sex of the riders. I'm asking for the number of people.
Mayor Butchinsky, we can give you a ridership report, and it'll show you in all the various categories just how many riders are on there. So we'll get you that this week. So you'll see UND student, you'll see adult, you'll see K-12 students. So you'll have a ridership report that'll show the difference. And then on the Dial-A-Ride, we can separate out the Dial-A-Ride rides versus the senior rider rides too.
Thank you.
Mr. Berg, I'm sorry, did you have something else?
I'm just gonna mention one other item. The 5.78 mils that you were talking about was voted in by the public in 1978. That would have to go back to the public vote again in order to have that reduced.
Mr. Bergman, you commented on my email earlier today about the university and the agreement that we're under. What are the terms of that agreement? The reason I'm asking again, since we've taken on UND's ridership, our expenses have grown 17% and change, yet UND is paying exactly the same. So why is it we're not increasing the fee to the university?
We are increasing the fee as far as the operation costs on it. The fee that you're looking at is the fee that we charge the UND student government is 75 cents per ride of a UND student. The faculty and staff, when they ride, it's $1.35, and that was in a five-year agreement that they had with us.
Got it. And that agreement expires the end of '26?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
That didn't get us anywhere. I can't, I'll never get that 20 minutes back.
All right, Ms. Lonsky, please.
I just have a quick questions about the children's museum, which I think, I think we need a children's museum. But I'm just curious why they would want to move when they're gonna have to pay a lease from free land? Do we know what we plan on charging them to lease the land by the Alaris?
Well, that would ultimately, I mean, they have to make the final decision. It would ultimately be up to the JDA, which is this body, including myself, on that land lease. I think their intention was to sell the land that they've got to be able to help it go toward, or, you know, if Altria was leasing it to them, they could sell that and potentially put more towards the capital to get the thing done upfront, and then, you know, work to build up their operating funds so they can pay out their leases, their expenses, all of that.
So someone donated them the land by choice, and so they can sell that land?
It's, I think that's the early plan with, it was Altria that had donated to them through a land lease. So they, same thing, like a 50-year land lease of, but I think that one had no rate to it. It was like a one-year land lease, kind of like the university leases the Ralph Lauren for a dollar type of thing. So there's a value in that, but it wasn't a lease. So it wasn't land that was given to them. So I think early they've talked about, I don't know that that has to be confirmed, but that Altria may sell the land and then give those dollars directly towards the structure itself, rather than it being in the land.
Thank you.
Mr. Weigle, Vice President Weigle.
I don't know if there's a way we, when we do go to vote, if we can just vote individually on some of the ideas that people have come forward with as far as our budget. I agree with many others. I'd love to see a net zero so that homeowners in our community aren't seeing an increase in taxes from the city of Grand Forks. Obviously, we can't control what the county or the school district does or the park district. But as far as our budget, I'd like to see a net zero, and I think some ways to get to that. Obviously, cutting two mills from the airport. Mayor, I tend to agree with you a little bit more. I think that I myself, I look at Grand Forks International Airport. And while it's super close to Ward 1, and I can get there in five minutes, and I can be on the plane in four more minutes after going through TSA. I do, however, enjoy saving anywhere from $100 to $300 by traveling to Winnipeg or traveling to Fargo to get on those same flights going to Minneapolis or somewhere else. And so while it may cost me a little bit of fuel, might be a little difference in parking, we do need to continue to get some competition for our airport here in Grand Forks. And I think we can adjust mills every single year. That's what our job is on the council. Just because we take two mills this year does not mean it doesn't go back to four mills next year. And so for the time being, I'd like to see that two mills go back to the citizens in Grand Forks. I've also looked at the employee wages. I think last year, we really listened to the employees, and what they really wanted was to keep the current health care, even though we had a potential to, again, save a significant amount of money. And so when I listen to the people within my ward, I consistently hear about property taxes. And so knowing that roughly 8.58%, I believe, is what I saw last year that our city employees got for raises, knowing that we're at approximately...
I think we're 8.5 last year.
8.5. I think if you add that last year and what we're looking at this year with funding 75% of the ECI, we're at 14.3%. The state of North Dakota had 10% raises, six and four. We're 4% above that. You look at Fargo, they did whatever they did, and we're above that as well. So we're consistently being above some of our peer communities with our raises. And so I'd be curious, what, if we funded the ECI at 50% this year, what would that do for, how much would that save in mills? And maybe, Mayor, you know, or Ms. Dorst.
I think we had, you know, run that number, and it was about 0.55. Is it 362,000.55?
I believe that the difference between the half and the three-quarter ECI is about 300,000 general fund dollars. And a mill is worth about $2.94.
So just over one mill?
I think it was 1.15, if I remember right.
Sounds good. I would be in support of that. Like I said, I'm all for our city employees. I push for them to, for public safety, to get a better retirement plan for firefighters and police officers. But at the same time, we have to balance our budget with what we're looking at as far as property taxes, as well as remaining competitive for our city employees. And so I think there's an opportunity to save a little bit of money there and also buy down an additional 1.1 or 1.2 mil at that time. So if we get an opportunity, I'd love to vote on these individually and see if we can't make our budget into something tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Weigle.
Did you want to list the items that you wanted to be voted on? Because we could start going through and voting on some of, you know, some of them as we work through it, so.
Sure, Mayor. I think number one, we talked about the special assessment cost share. I don't recall exactly what that saved.
Depends on if we give them, give them money back or if we keep it to pay for the roads. I think for next year, we could give it back because our roads are all paid for for next year. It's already part of the, part of the plan.
Yeah, that's a good logic. I guess it depends upon the speed that you want to get to 70/30. If you want to do it over five years, then it's 162 divided by five. If you want to do it over 10 years, it'd be 1.62 million divided by 10.
Ideally, personally, I'd like to do it a little slower, so I'd be fine over 10 years. That way, it doesn't hit everybody all at once. And then I think we could also vote on the two airport mills. I think we could vote on the 50% ECI as well for salaries.
Can we vote on the children's museum?
We already have, but we can again if you want to.
I would love another vote on the children's museum, maybe so they can't build on our land. I don't know, but.
All right, so I've got, I mean, on the special assessment, I think, you know, we've got, obviously, that's a conversation that we need to have. I mean, I think if we did the math and we used highway user funds and put it in there, what was the total there? If you went 1%, it's basically 162,000, which if you divide that by 2.9, and you wanted to use that to offset your general fund.
And that would be my clarification. If you're helping the street and infrastructure fund, or you'd be transferring it in for property tax relief?
0.55 would be the mill reduction there. And I would caution that, you know, it does need to, talking with Mr. Grasser, 10 years is probably too long, just of a timeframe to get to 70/30, if that's the direction that we go. But really with the intention of making sure that the projects get done, you know. So I wouldn't plan on removing that every year, I guess is the point, because those ones are gonna be needed.
And I think with our budget, we can, just because we do something this year, doesn't mean we have to do it next year or the year after that. I think we have some flexibility within our budget, just like we do at the airport. If they come back and say, hey, we need these mills for X, Y, or Z, then we can put those mills back in. We're not, we're not set to that. And so I think each year is its own budget. And I think this year, we need to do the best we can to keep everything even.
I know, do you want to talk? I know there is some, you know, administrative work that needs to be done to kind of manage that as you go year after year and having, you know, different assessment levels.
Well, thank you, Mayor, Councilman Weigle, members of the council. I guess my only thought on this, I would recommend more time to analyze the cost share and the impacts on the street infrastructure fund. As President Sandy's already stated, we do have a lot of large projects going through there. So we've been wanting to analyze and bring forward a plan about cost shares separate from this discussion. So my preference and recommendation would be that you allow us to go back and analyze the cost shares and bring forward a plan.
Sounds good.
So your recommendation is for this preliminary approval, we keep it in. But then before middle of September, you'll have other thoughts for us? Is that correct?
Yes, that's fine. What I'd like to do when we talk about policy like this is just make sure we're consistent in application and well thought out. So I'd like to have time to work through that with the engineering department, with the projects, with the cash flow analysis, and take a look at more of a sustaining plan on that before bringing forward a recommendation.
All right, so I got three things written down here, at least at this point. It would be, the first one is the airport mills. If you want to add back into the budget, two mills. Second one would be the children's museum, voting to not allow them to build on 42nd. Is that the way you'd like it phrased?
I guess I would like to...
Or do not want to build at all, I guess is the...
I mean, ultimately, I don't want to build at all, and I don't like the initial $10 million that we have for them. I don't like that, but now we're starting to suckhole more than $10 million out of our taxpayer citizens by putting them within our infrastructure. We're doing studies for them already. Yeah, I did say suckhole.
So how do you want the, I guess, what do you want the language to say if we're gonna vote on that?
I, what was the original plan that we actually voted on for them? That they would get $5 million initially, correct? And then we would continue to fund them $400,000 until...
For 10 years, yeah, roughly.
I would like to see us stick to that original plan and not a dime more. No more tying them into our aquatic center on our land. I think they need to stand alone on their own two feet. I think $10 million is already too much, but I know that I have lost that vote before, so.
So then it's back to not allowing them to go?
Yes. I want them to go on the land that they were donated and to fend for themselves.
We're not saying that they won't, right?
Well, I don't know.
And that's, I guess, where I struggle.
I'm scared that if we let them build on our property, that they are leasing for a minimal amount. If they go under or they start having operational issues or anything like that, it's gonna be the taxpayers who are going to have to bail them out. I mean, I think the Alaris Center is almost a perfect example. That tax was supposed to sunset, and here we are, still paying for that. And so I think that since it was already voted on to give them the $10 million, that that's it. I don't think that we should be doing studies and including them. I don't think that we should be paying for their snow removal, their beautification costs. I mean, tarring their driveway or their parking lot. I think that things are getting out of hand now, and it's gonna cost us more than $10 million.
I look at the Alaris Center. Yes, it could have sunsetted in 2029, but the people that voted, voted to extend that. Whether we like it or not, no matter how we voted, they chose to extend that.
There was no vote on the children's museum.
Right. What I'm saying, though, is you loop in the Alaris Center into that, and they chose to extend it. They did. We talked about the Grand Forks Airport, how it brings people in, and they spend money, and they stay in hotels, and they stay in restaurants. The same argument could be made for the children's museum.
When's the last time you were at a museum, Danny?
I've never gone to a museum.
Exactly. I don't think a lot of us go to museums regularly. I think it'll be a good school field trip to go to that, you know, maybe the kids in Thief River Falls might take a bus. I don't think that this is gonna be a huge revenue for the city, not even in sales taxes. It's gonna be parents who are at the Alaris Center for an event or at the aquatic center that might need to let their kids run around for a half hour. I do not think that people travel around to go see museums.
I disagree. I disagree. I think Minut has recently done it. Can't we get numbers from Minut to see if it's, how it's affected them or Bismarck?
I think museums are, I think, a thing of the past, and I really disagree with that, and I see that you're not- So how much money do you want to spend on this children's museum, then, Tricia?
I'm not saying that. I'm just saying-
Just for the sake of keeping order, why don't you finish your thought, and then we'll let you speak, and then we'll keep it under Robert's rules here. Please, finish, Ms. Osowski.
I just want to see it go back to the original amount that we said and not tie them in with anything else.
All right, Ms. Lonsky, please.
I guess I'm just curious, if a big box store wanted to buy that land from us, would we still do the studies, the same studies, if it's a nonprofit or a big box store? Or are we treating the children's museum differently because they're nonprofit? Or would we do this to anyone who wanted to rent, buy that or lease that land from us?
Well, currently, the city owns the land, so we need to know the use cases and what the, you know, does the traffic flow goes regardless. So I mean, I don't know if Ryan Brooks wants to answer that question, but, you know, some of the traffic studies and that work needs to be done for the sports center. So you could, you know, you can add on to a study pretty easily.
Yeah, I'll take a crack at it. I think certainly any land that we would, if we were gonna sell it or have somebody else be on it, we would certainly need to make sure it's master planned and the city's property is taken care of. So I think we'd be looking at a master plan no matter what, but I'm certainly happy to try to answer any questions on that.
Okay. Well, I think we've got, I've got written down on the children's museum vote is to not allow the children's museum to move to the land near the Alaris Center through a lease or any other means outside of a sale. Is that fair?
Okay. And then do we want to have a vote on the staff wages, I guess is the other question?
Mr. Mayor, with all due respect to Mr. Weigle, I think as he's very poignantly pointed out, every budget year is free for all. Some people just got elected on this council the first time. I think having a similar council around during the duration of when we're trying to reclaim these, uh, uh, the percentage breakdown for the special assessments is probably good so that you have the continuity of the council. So I would recommend sticking with a five-year phase in rather than a 10-year, because in two years, let alone four years, who knows who's going to be here?
Yeah. Do we want to leave that one out for now as far as we'll have?
I think each one, I think we should, well, that's, yes, and, and I think we, yes, we hold on that, but still, I think it, if we're going to be going through the process of doing the calculations, I think we should do it over five years rather than 10.
And that would be a good, probably a good discussion item for the next committee of the whole meeting, we'll have a couple before that final to make a decision there. And then, I don't know, obviously, as I'm talking about these, these items will need to be, you know, motioned and seconded to be brought up, but I'm still, I'm just going to add them in there. Did you want to depress on the, you'd mentioned on healthcare, did you, how did you want to leave that? Was it, is it something that you wanted to press on and get a vote for, or was it, um...
Well, with what Danny's seeking, and Mr. Weigel is seeking at this time, I, I think I would hold, hold off on that and, um, address it, I guess, with viewing pears and the loss for future employees with not having that plan.
All right, so I've got...
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make one point regarding the airport mills. Similar to how Ms. Dorsted wants to take some time on this sort of change to capital projects, um, I think, uh, we have a few weeks, I think we should keep the two mills in. If council votes at final that they want to remove the two mills, fine, but at least this will give us time to take a look at the six-year CIP and get a better understanding. I mean, if we take the two mills out today, we're sunk. So, um, if, uh, again, I think having the ability to review their CIP so that we have a really good understanding of what the, what the funds are being used for, and it, the CIP will tell us if they need the mills or not. So I think ultimately, if we get the CIP with the narrative of what's going on, I think it'll, it'll at least allow us to, um, have a better understanding when we're, when we're voting on that. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, and I think, you know, we also have opened it up. I think we've opened up the ability for them to access economic development funds, if that's the case, if they come back with a CIP and to do it. So I'm going to stick with it. I still think we should vote for it, uh, today. If we're going to review the CIP, I think we need to go back a number of years and look at, um, how the dollars were used in the past, because, just because you spent some dollars on something else and said, no, these are city funds going towards this now, they certainly were interchangeable, and decisions were made that, that clearly haven't benefited the taxpayer. And I, I just, we can go and do it every single year, and we can find a reason to spend more money every time, but I think at some point, we've got to, um, we've got to align with what other cities are doing. I mean, how is every other airport managing off of two mills or less, and we just pay four every single year because there's a new project around the corner? I mean, to me, it just seems enough.
I think, Mr. Mayor, there are some major employers in our community that didn't set regulations, they didn't set the standard for their employees to use our airport. Williston is an outlier because of the oil boom out there, and they've got enough going both directions. And frankly speaking, Fargo has been incredibly aggressive. They've been buying, they've been buying our ridership. And so when you've got the university, when you've got Altru flying people in and out of Fargo, it doesn't help our, our airport, and so we're low hanging fruit. I think, I think we shouldn't plan for failure, I think we should continue to plan for success. And I think with Dr. Amikos being on board, with Megan Compton being on board at Altru and making the commitments to flying out of, uh, out of Grand Forks, I think things will change for us. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, I certainly hope that they do, because it's about as low as it can go. All right, so we've got some...
Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Veen.
Yeah, just a quick question, it has to go back to the, um, children's museum. I, I know we were, we're projected to make a payment of what, 2.5 million this year and then 4 mil, or 400,000 per year. With, it appears that that's not going to be under construction this year, I'm not for sure even next year with the time it takes. I'm assuming that money then would sit in reserve and we would just get interest off that money? And then if, depending on what happens, and I certainly hope that they do build, but if, if something does, unperceived does happen, that would just come back into, into what fund?
Yeah, I know we approved an agreement, so I guess maybe highlight the terms of the agreement that was agreed to, I don't, was it several months ago?
It was several months ago, Mayor, and, and Councilmember Veen. My memory is that they had to come back and, and make requests and show that their construction was, uh, moving forward, and they had to come back and show that they had the funding available. Uh, there were a few conditions that they had to prove up before, uh, money would be paid out.
In the, in the meantime, though, we have that in our, in our coffers here, and we're getting interest off of that, is that right?
Yes, Councilmember Veen, members of council, so our plan is until those funds are ready to be drawn upon, we'll have those set aside in a separate reserve cash account, and yes, it would earn interest in our economic development fund.
Could, could we be using that interest money off of that money for, uh, reducing mill levy?
I guess that would be a decision up to city council.
I don't even know how much that is, so...
2163, so it's not in a general fund, um, account right now.
Okay.
All right, so why don't we start with the airport, so we would need, we'd need a vote then to, if, uh, if you're following Mr. President Sandy and Ms. Osowski to add that back in. So we would need a motion to add back in two mills, because right now it would be out of the budget, so if it got voted for, um, it would not be in there in September.
I'll motion to add it back into the budget, and then we'll have time to review.
I'll second. You got a motion and a second to add back into the budget two mills, um, related to the airport, so why don't we go, why don't you go, just go down the line, uh, on a, oh, actually, is there any more comment on that? I should probably open that up first. All right, seeing none, so a yes vote would add it back in, um, a no vote would keep it as is in the budget. So why don't you just do a roll call vote, please, Marine?
Sure, okay, so this motion was to add the two mills back in, correct, for the airport. Uh, Weigel?
No.
Osowski?
Yes.
Berg?
No.
Lunskey?
No.
Friedols?
No.
Sandy?
Sure.
And Veen?
Yes.
All right, that motion was defeated.
Four to three.
Four to three, thank you. All right, children's museum, we'd be looking at a motion to not allow the children's museum to move to the land near the center, Alara Center through a, a lease or other means outside of a land purchase.
Okay, roll call vote again?
We gotta get, we're gonna get, we have to get a motion and a second for that first.
I motion that.
All right, we got a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second for...
Sorry, were you trying to second it or? Okay, we'll give Mr. Friedols the second. Any further discussion on that?
Quick, quick question, Mayor. Um, what's the actual financial implication of this motion on impacting...
There wouldn't be any financial implication at this moment, because no, no lease has been offered or decided at this point. I think it would just be fair to send them a message, if, if you want to eliminate the possibility of them, uh, moving near the Alara Center, um, we should probably let them know sooner rather than later, so that's really what this vote would be doing. And we could probably not transfer the land then, I mean, it'd be an internal transfer, but would that be true, Ms. Dorsted?
Yes, I guess, um, if the children's museum were not to be on that land, um, the GDA would not, uh, move forward with that purchase.
Would we want to have it in the JDA's hand if we're going to sell the, the property to outside source to begin with?
Yes, it, it could, I guess, but until the, you probably want to wait till the use is determined.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Veen?
Yeah, I think it does, I think there's, it's probably a bigger issue than just that, if you look at the site plan and the future of the site, uh, for your expansion or growth. I think there's pros and cons to this, but there are certain, certain values to that land, obviously for who's ever there, and, um, I'm, I, I think this isn't necessarily a vote against the, um, uh, the children's museum, but a, a vote for wherever at the location.
Yep. All right, any...
Can you repeat the motion?
The motion is to, um, not allow the children's museum, I guess we could put the, you know, I think we all understand what we're talking about, so I, I know they have a children's museum, they have a nonprofit, that nonprofit to, to make the move, um, where they had originally proposed to be by there, now I'm expanding it, but to move to the land, uh, near the Alara Center through a lease or any other means, with the exception of a land purchase.
So a yes is saying you cannot move here?
Cannot move here, we're taking it off the table for future, um...
Unless they buy the land.
Unless they buy the land.
Okay, and a no is...
Is leaving it on the table, and we can decide later if, if we would extend a lease to them or not, or, or incorporate it with anything. Is that clear? All right, any further discussion? Why don't you flip it and vote again? Let's flip the order.
All right, we will start with Veen.
Uh, yes.
And, yep.
Okay, um, okay, Sandy?
A no vote means it can, it can go there.
A no mean votes...
Means it can go.
Mr. Veen, yes, yeah, yes means that it cannot go there at ever, and no means, um, that it's still a, a possibility.
I think Mr. Gustaf wants to...
Yeah, maybe you can make this...
A no vote also does not obligate the city to do anything with the land.
Right, exactly.
All right.
So I vote no.
Okay.
Okay, understanding that, Veen, is your vote still a yes?
Yes, it is.
Okay, Friedols? Lunskey?
No.
Berg?
No.
Osowski?
Yes.
And Weigel?
No.
All right, I got two, two to five, that motion was defeated?
That's correct.
All right. Now we, I believe, are on to ECI, so this would be, um, I was going to pull up the numbers. A reduction on the ECI, keeping the steps, but a reduction on the ECI to 50%. Do you have that num, that pulled up? Okay, I was going to look at it here, just so we have clear numbers on that, 1-0-1-8-4-5-2 divided by three. So it'd be 339,000 is the general fund impact. If I just take a third, if the 70, is that, would that be correct? If you take a third of where the ECI is being, that it's at 75%?
4.65.
So you'd be at a four, but it's, it's 339,484, I get...
Do you have that tangy?
It's, it's right around $356,000, general fund impact.
364 or 5, 5 or 4?
Depending on what numbers you're using, but right around 360.
Around 360,000, I'm just dividing that by, uh, the mill, 294, 256, so 306, 1.22 mills, 3, um, 360,000. So we, I guess we'd need a motion a second if you're going to reduce it from 75 to 50. Anyone wanting to make the motion?
All right, I make that motion, Mayor.
Hey, Mr. Weigel makes that motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it, taking a vote.
A second from Ms. Osowski. Any further discussion on that? Claudia, just, Ms. Berg, please.
Yes, Mayor, I, I guess I do have concern of this. Um, if the employees are, have just been negatively impacted, so any new employee starting, um, January 1 is not going to have whatever N D. Per's plan the city already has, and they're going to, it's a big loss for future employees. And so, I guess, if we're not going to enhance things for the employees in some way, like I, may, maybe it is adding in, I guess, a review of the insurance benefits. Um, I'm just concerned that we're not taking care of the employees.
So if you, you can certainly, uh, one second, Mr. Weigel, just if you do, you know, you can certainly add if you wanted to have that, depending upon how the, where the vote goes, you know, on the health insurance, what you were thinking on that. So that's obviously still open. Mr. Weigel, any comments?
I would agree with, with Ms. Berg, however, the one thing I would say is that it's every other city that buys into the N D. Per's system, so it's not just the city of Grand Forks that's facing this issue. Um, it's also the state of North Dakota and every state employee, um, besides public safety, law enforcement, fire, et cetera, so, um, while it, it stinks that the state went away with that defined benefit plan, um, however, it's still something that, um, every other community is facing as well as, as well as the state, so.
Any further comments on the motion? President Sandy, please.
You know, budget time really sucks. It's just, these are the, these are the worst, uh, decisions that we have to make, and, uh, because it's people, right? And, and these are friends and neighbors and people that dedicate their lives to our community and trying to make it a better place every day. I, uh, I've been mulling around, struggling with this a lot. I think that we did take a big jump last year. We did that because of some studies and changing the plan. Uh, I'll still say I don't like our current plan. Um, I, anytime the employees want to go back to the previous plan where we had relatively uncontroversial discussions and raises moving on, um, I... Anyway, this is nothing personal to anyone, I appreciate our, our employees are our most valuable asset, and the Alara Center is second, and the water treatment plant, don't forget that, but our employees are certainly our most important, the most important thing that we have here, but, um, we, we know that the taxpayers are feeling the pinch too, and so finding that balance is important. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, President Sandy. Any further comments? All right, seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Marine, why don't you, uh, you did backwards, you did forward, why don't you shuffle it up, and we'll, we'll trust you can do that. So right now, the, the current is a 75% ECI, so you'd be, um, not changing the steps, not changing any of the other promotions, anything else, it would just be a change from the ECI. Has budgeted down to, uh, 50%, which is roughly a 360,000 savings and 1.22 mills.
Correct, okay, well, we'll start with Weigel.
Yes.
Lunskey?
Okay, so I have to ask, a vote for no is to keep it as is, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
A yes would change, okay. Uh, okay, Osowski?
Yes.
Friedols?
No.
Veen?
No.
Berg?
No.
And Sandy?
Yes.
All right.
We have three yeses, four nos.
Motion was defeated, three to four. All right, I got my list done, so I guess we'll open it up to President Sandy, please.
Mayor, I'd like to, uh, encourage, uh, the city of Grand Forks to, um, do what we do best, hire a consultant to, uh, study the, uh, cost savings of the Park District becoming a department within the city of Grand Forks. I think, uh, our community, uh, we have so many redundant services provided by the city and the Park District, um, especially with the, uh, Aquatic Center and the turf facility coming on board. I think that there are just so many reasons why, uh, the Park District really should be overseen by the city council, um, rather than being a, a separate taxing entity. So, um, I would like us to, um, perhaps, uh, Mr. Schell, who is really good at, uh, looking at economics in the economies in our community, could scratch that out on a napkin in a half an hour and, and bring that back to council. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, did you want to, I guess, did you want to have a formal vote on that item or just wait?
It, will city staff administratively do that, or do they want us to direct them to do that?
I think on something like that, it probably better to get council approval on that.
I'll make the motion that the city of Grand Forks hire a consultant to study the Park District becoming a department within the city of Grand Forks.
I second.
Um, we got a motion, a second, I just want to check with the city attorney, having no notice on this, do you feel like we have a requirement, or are we, are we debating this as part of the budgetary process as a review of, of their budgets and budget savings? I guess it depends upon how you look at it.
I'm not sure it's necessarily connected to the, to the, not sure it's connected to the budget process, I'd be more comfortable having it as committee of the whole.
Can we put it on the committee of the whole agenda for next week? Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Gustaf.
Not sure we have a vote yet on the preliminary budget as was presented.
Yeah.
Do you think you need to have a vote on it?
Yeah, I didn't know if there was then...
I'm still working my way through.
Yeah, I think there was more conversation. It seemed better to go through the items as we're working our way through here, but...
Mr. Mayor, I'd, um, entertain, uh, the city of Grand Forks dropping its recycling program. I think, uh, recycling is a recessive tax or a regressive tax that, uh, puts the burden on the people that recycle the most to paying, um, not the... I don't think it's fair for the wealthier consumers in our community to get their recycling subsidized by those people that aren't recycling as much. I would be willing to entertain drop sites for the community if people don't want to eliminate the program altogether, but I just, every year after we had an intern study the recycling program and present to us that the wealthy people in town get their recycling subsidized by the people less fortunate, I just, every time we come for the budget session, I have a real hard time stomaching our recycling program. So I would, frankly, I'd do away with the whole program, but if people want to keep drop sites, I'd entertain that as well.
I think that would be, let me get, just real quick, I want to make, get a question with, our current contract, is there an out, is it a yearly? What do we have the current contract going through, and do we have the ability to pull all that going into 2025 and just keep the drop sites or some other option? Mr. Phelan?
Yeah, Mayor Pachansky, Sharon and I from Public Works spoke today, we have a 90-day out in that agreement. I would, I'd recommend that we maintain some sort of recycling, I think it's still part of our solid waste landfill permit, so way back in the day, circa 2007, we agreed to maintain a recycling program to divert as much as we could from our solid waste landfill, and that ended up in our permit, I suspect it's still on our landfill permit.
So you'd recommended a minimum, keeping the drop sites and?
Yeah, keeping some sort of recycling, reasonable recycling program.
All right, well, Ms. Lunskey, please.
That kind of breaks my heart to give her recycling, but is there, is there, can we look at other options? I know other cities like charge everyone and then give a credit to the people who do recycle, or can you explain how some people subsidize for other people?
President Sandy, please.
Be happy to explain it, and as a matter of fact, the city of Grand Forks, we have a report on it that I'm sure somebody can dig through and find it. The fact is, people that have more wealth buy more things and recycle more. People that have less wealth buy fewer things and recycle less, yet everyone in our community pays the exact same for recycling.
Same for garbage though, too, right?
That's correct. Perhaps we should go to a pay-as-you-throw system. I've been arguing for that for, I don't know, 12 years now. And so implementation of that is very difficult. I know there are communities that have those systems. You can buy garbage bags at your local grocery store, if it's a green one, it's recycling, if it's red, it's garbage, and then you're, because you're buying the bags, they pick up your recycling, they pick up your garbage, you're paying for whatever you put in those bags. Implementation is difficult, you would have to change the trucks that are used to pick everything up. Putting that in over time, it's just, it's expensive and a bureaucratic nightmare, but I'd be, I'd entertain that, I think it's a great, it's a great concept. I think people should pay for what they get rid of. If that causes us to reduce the number of employees that we need in our sanitation department, that becomes problematic though, because we need those people in times of, I don't know, snowfall or things like that. So finding that right balance. Right now, our recycling is all under contract, and so we can just eliminate the contract, and then everybody gets a savings on their, on their utility bill.
Can we see what other options there are? Like, can we charge everyone the same and give them a credit if they recycle?
I, we have, we currently have a contract with Waste Management. I fully expected Mr. Phelan to say, hey, we need, we're, we've got a, because he says this every year when I bring this up, it's part of our landfill permit, and so we can't really eliminate our recycling program, but I'd certainly entertain studying it and trying to figure out how to make it better.
Mayor?
Mr. Veen, and then we'll go to you, Mr. Weigle.
Yeah, I'm kind of concurring with what Mr. Sandy said, I think we should, we should potentially study it, and just like the previous motion, I wonder if we could send that to committee of the whole and have, and allow more public input and get other thoughts, and then study what those options really might mean and what the savings are. So that would be my recommendation.
All right, you got that, Mr. Phelan, we got two more, well, two and a half more items to add to the committee of the whole.
Mayor, do you have a count of where we are in our mil reduction at this point? We're two mils.
Right where we started.
One point.
That's not true, the ECI, we reduced the ECI, so we're.
That motion failed.
That's right, it failed. Yeah, right, we're right where we started. All right, well, Mayor, I make a motion to approve the budget as stated.
All right.
I second.
We have a motion and a second, I guess any further discussion at this point?
With where things currently are at, like what would a median home be paying in addition to what they currently are?
I think you have that calculation, Ms. Dorstad.
Yes, so councilmember Berg, members of the council, so with a 2.93 mil reduction, you'd be paying an additional 55 cents per month, per 100,000 of values, so for the median value home, it's $1.61 a month, based on the 2.93 mil reduction. For a total, then, I believe you pay like $79 a month in total with the, with the total mils for the city.
So on the average home, one more time?
So it's $1.61 a month, per month increase on a medium value home of 239,000. So your median value home is 239,000, so that's how.
That's $19.32 yearly increase, okay. And you can double that if you're at 480, and et cetera.
Yeah. So for your median value home, you pay $79 a month after the discount, the 5% discount. And maybe just a reminder that hopefully most residents apply to get their $500 property tax credit, that was through the state system, that'll be reflected on the estimated tax statement. So we tried to get the word out as much as possible, the state did, the county did, so hopefully most people met that deadline and applied for that property tax credit. That's for each primary residence.
Thank you.
All right, any further comments for the 2025 preliminary budget? We have a motion a second?
I would just include in that motion to also set the public hearing for September 16th at 5:30 in city council chambers.
Is that part of your motion, Mr. Sandy, in your second, Ms. Osowski? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. All right, I gotta get my chart back up here. I believe that's it for action items, is that correct? So information items, item six, there are none this evening, and seven, approval of minutes and bills. I see one, two, three, four, we'll get to that next, five, six, seven.
Yes.
Seven meetings of minutes on there, does that make you happy?
There we go.
It made me very happy to see that.
All right, let's start with 7.1, then we'll let you motion that in a second.
Okay, thank you. So we'll start with 7.1, the vendor lists and engineers estimates as attached.
We got a motion to approve, we got a motion for Ms. Lunskey, do we have a second?
I second.
Second for Ms. Osowski, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
And 7.2, yes, Ms. Lomark has been working feverishly, she was trying to get caught up completely, but we're minus the 15th and the special meeting, the 22nd, we're caught up. So we have May 6, 20th, June 3, 17th, the signed eye meeting from July 1st, and organizational meeting along with the regular meeting on July 1st.
I greatly appreciate that, and I move approval.
Got a motion to approve from Ms. Osowski, second from Ms. Berg. I'm assuming everyone did get to go through the minutes then for all seven of those minutes to make sure, we'll just leave that up to, the motion was as is, so we have a motion in seconds, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. That's it for item seven, item eight, citizens comments of general nature, do you have any comments this evening, Ms. Lomark?
We have two. First one that came in was Sean Beclair.
All right, Mr. Beclair, please.
Good evening, council, mayor, glad to be here again. My name is Sean Beclair, I own Tark LLC, located at 2325 North Washington. I'm here to address you on two topics, and they relate to the following. Always an American, words and action follow, and almost an American, words and actions also follow. What I observed here related to Foo Fang is a latter from the majority of council. I'd like to focus on two things that are currently in front of you. One is the property, right? Handling the disposal of the property violation. I've never seen such a circus with the simple operation. Second, and probably most importantly, is the 10 Chinese nationals that are on the UND campus, right? Is that correct, Mr. Mayor? Are you aware of them? The 10 Chinese nationals that you helped move in? Moving on, normally I wear this suit for weddings and funerals, but as a sign of respect to my councilmember Osowski and Mr. Veen, as well as United States Air Force, the CIA, right, the FBI, Department of Justice, who are also important, protects from internal threats, I'm wearing that. And finally, I had a very fortunate life of having good personal and professional women be part of that, so as honor of the past, present, and the future we'll meet, a simple statement, never miss a good opportunity to listen to an intelligent woman. Let me repeat that. Never miss a good opportunity to listen to an intelligent woman. Reason why it's so relevant here is the majority of the train wreck with Foo Fang is associated with male leadership. We've had some very bright, intelligent women in back and in front of us that you've chosen not to listen to. So let's move on to national security. There's a national security investigation by the United States Air Force, right? We had five of the seven council members, plus the mayor, who chose not to participate. Let's wrap our minds around that, a national security investigation, majority of the council did not participate. So we had what? Two teams, right? The team I was wearing, the American team, Osowski, Mr. Veen was wearing, what was the other jersey that you guys wore? China. You wore the China jersey when it came to a national security thing. Unbelievable is the only word to describe that. What was the final outcome? I have in a letter here from Peter Hunter, I believe that, excuse me, Andrew P. Hunter, that said they were a national security threat, both short and long term. These are my words, not theirs. United States Air Force is respected and admired around the world, especially by China, our number one adversary, on the ability to what? Deter, defend, and if needed, engage in compact to protect American allies. Only an idiot would jack with the United States Air Force and believe that is a smart choice. I'm not smiling, sir, an idiot. You're continuing to jack with the United States Air Force by what? Not acting on the Foo Fang property. Unbelievable is the only word I can say there. Again, right, handling the disposal of property is pretty simple, guys. Enforcement, right, it's straightforward, it needs to go, Mr. Wrigley, reports to commissioner. Let me ask this, Mr. Weigle, as lieutenant at UND campus, is acceptable for a citizen to help stop a crime by reporting it, like for example, robbery and process? Is that acceptable? This is the part that drives me up the wall. I'm a citizen, I'm spending my time, and I can't get a simple yes or no? It's insulting, is what it is. Let's move on to the Chinese nationals on campus, the 10 Chinese nationals on campus, and why it's so important. I've sent numerous, what, FBI, right from the FBI about the importance of that, that Foo Fang? Are they Foo Fang, Mr. Sandy? Is that who's there, Foo Fang? Because when I go back to the 715 meeting, timestamp 55, this is a quote, "Chief, are you aware that Ms. Womsted knows that the Chinese government owns land north, north in the Grand Forks?" Wow, all of a sudden, that's a showstopper for me, we're no longer talking about Foo Fang, right? We're talking about China CCP.
Thank you, Mr. Beclair, that's gonna be your five minutes, appreciate your time coming up here today, much appreciated.
I'm not done, sir. The greatest long-term information about the economy.
Mr. Beclair, your time's completed, there's a person who's after you that would like to speak as well.
Do you know who said that, Mr. Veen?
Mr. Beclair, your five minutes has been completed, and there's a person waiting to go after you, that you're holding them up.
Today, sir, the only way I'm leaving this podium is to shut the meeting down and take it out. You know why? It's pretty sad.
All right, Mr. Beclair, your time has been completed, can you step down from the podium, please, and allow the next citizen their opportunity to speak, sir?
I do, I keep my word. If you want me removed from this podium, what can I say?
Sir, your time has been completed, please take a seat. You're disrupting the meeting to this point now.
I'm taking a seat because, you know why? I want to send the message, it's not the farmland.
Okay, Mr. Beclair, I guess I would look, under our policy, just look for a motion to recess.
I'll make a motion for recess.
We got a motion from Ms. Lunskey, do we got a second from Ms. Berg? So all those in favor of taking a short recess, so Mr. Beclair can get himself under control, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is voted unanimously.
Well, I didn't vote on that, but my mic.
Oh, sorry, your mic?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that down all our microphones?
Yeah, they're all turned off right now.
I asked numerous questions. You chose not to answer.
I don't know how to view that one. We'll just take a short break and.
Their actions gave trouble to them.
There was six yes votes and a no vote, Ms. Osowski had dissented on that. So, thank you. We'll just take a short break and... There was six yes votes and a no vote. Ms. Oselsky had dissented on that. So, thank you. Start the meeting.
Who's the one being rude? You serious?
If you want to call the next citizen up, that'd be great.
Who exactly do you think you are? I asked you questions you won't answer.
You could call the next citizen up. Ms. Lenmark, please.
Hi. The next citizen I have is Dennis Denault.
All right. Mr. Denault, please, you've got five minutes. Thank you.
All right. All right. Thanks, Mayor, and all Councilmembers. I've got a couple of issues to speak about, and it's mainly safety. First of all, this is in regards to illegal parking on the west side of Knutson Printing. When I was at the coal gasification project, we had 14,000 workers on that job site, and the company would not listen to us. They did not want to hang, set up a 3/8 cable, and that would have saved that guy's life. So you haven't seen anybody laying on a puddle of blood and kicking like a chicken, but if they would have listened to us, he'd still be alive. But after he was killed, after he died on the job, they put that cable up. That's the same thing as what's going on on the west side of that building. The way they drive in the wintertime, the way they come around, that diagonal parking is illegal. And we had an FBI investigator, and we sued H.J. Kaiser and the coal gasification, two of the largest projects, or the largest project in the whole United States at that time. I brought this up many years ago, vehicles with tinted windows, when Mr. Kruen was part of the Safety Committee. And nothing was done. That's a very, this is getting crazy, and these windows are tinted so dark in the daytime. Anybody could pull up a pistol and take care of you, just like when I was working down the cities. They took care of that guy there on 694 in the daytime. They never did find out who did it. And the three strike crew, okay? Not only the parking, but there's been a lot of activity going on there. There's a lot of people with these electric bikes. Hey, Dana, I've got a question for you. All right? That's a one-bedroom, and this gal, no, 75 to 100 people, and there's about four or five others staying up there, and that's just a little one-bedroom. That's not even counting all the people that are coming and going 24 hours a day up next door. Why can't inspections get hooked up with our Health Department and the PD? Go up there and do a little, do some temporary investigating? That place needs it. All these electric bikes, it'd be tough to do, but it should be nice if they were licensed because I consider them motorized vehicles, transportation, and it's just, it's getting out of hand there. Dale's still here? The bus shelters? We had bus shelters on their main routes. There's a lot of places that could use shelters. Over in East Grand, they got shelters everywhere, and there's nobody on the bus over there every time I go over there to these bus shelters, except for the college. And University Avenue is a very, very, it's a breezy street in the wintertime when you're sitting there catching that strong west wind, waiting for the bus. Once again, I talked to a guy. He lost his boy because of drugs a few years ago, and yet here's Javin from the Health Department giving him trouble about a couple of extra cars in his yard. But they ain't worried about the legal drugs that are killing people, but, oh, if you got an extra car, like for me, a gallon of antifreeze and a quart of oil, oh, boy, they're on me, man. I'll tell you what. But legal parking, that's okay, and all the drugs next door. And property taxes. I was paying more in property taxes, almost double than that two-story mouse cage years ago. Three to four times the square footage, plus a three-car garage in the back and a corner lot? Yeah. So like the old boys told me when I came to this town, how rigged it is. So anyway, something's got to be done about all the legal activities. Thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Denault. All right. Ms. Lenmark, any other citizen comments this evening?
No, that's all I have tonight.
Let me pull my agenda. I think we just have left... City Administrator comments. There we go. I'm trying to find my papers here.
Mayor, I have nothing further.
Mr. Phelan, nothing further to add tonight, so now we got Councilmember and Mayor comments. So let me start with Mr., Ms. Oselsky, you get to go first.
Yay.
Please.
Um, I have to say, I'd like to say, see the Foo Fang land wrapped up. The sooner the better. But moving on from that, I have personally requested an inspections report for the property that Mr. Denault continuously speaks about, and I still have not received that yet. And so I am requesting anybody from the city to please provide that to me. I'm not really sure what it entails, but I have requested that, so I would like to see that. Also, Mr. Denault is right. Ward 2 has, we have a horrible parking situation. I wish Chief Nelson was actually in here. I've had probably this week, five different citizens send me photos, emails, phone calls, text messages about people parking on their front lawn in Ward 2. I have directed them to call 311 so we can get some data off of that, and none of these issues have been taken care of. I don't know if our police department is short-staffed. I don't know if they don't care, but it is a huge problem in Ward 2 with people parking on their front lawns. And I think it looks tacky and trashy and is unacceptable. And so I would like to see, actually, people following up on some of these 311 calls and going out and issuing some tickets, as this is against city code. Also, going, talking about the parking, we need to make sure that if we're moving private residences into resident, or, sorry, into rentals, or if we're putting up buildings, Memorial Village 1 and 2, we have to make sure that these people have adequate parking because soon Memorial Village 1 and 2 and the softball field will be up and running, and that's right in my ward, and that is going to cause major parking issues over there also. They didn't build those places with enough parking spaces. A lot of these rental units do not have adequate parking space. It's my understanding that they are just being approved anyways as rentals, even though they don't have adequate parking space, and now people are parking on lawns, and our police department won't even go out and ticket it. So I would like to see some action taken on that city code. So, thank you.
Mayor Burchenski, I'll follow up on the, I won't, I know they were, Knutson Printing was going to be back from their vacation this week, and so we will follow up with a report back to all Council. I will not put that on the agenda because it's more of an individual issue. And then on the parking on the lawns in Memorial Village 1 and 2 and its startup and the parking concerns, we'll follow up with that, and we can put that on agenda, too.
Thank you. And I'd like to see the police department actually go issue some tickets to some of these people who have had their vehicles parked in their lawn, not just during lunchtime, but for multiple days where I'm receiving a picture every day of them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oselsky. Ms. Berg, any comments this evening?
Yes. I actually did attempt to reach out to Foo Fang LLC to try to elicit a response, requesting information to determine if they were in fact in compliance or not, and unfortunately, I haven't heard back. So if they are listening, I hope that they do provide me that information that was requested. In addition, I also just want to express gratitude and thank you to Northland Rescue Mission for inviting us and giving me and Mr. Phelan a tour of their location and what they do for our community.
Thank you. Ms. Lunskey, any comments this evening? No. Mr. Friedols?
Just a real quick one. I met with one of the citizens of Ward 5 last Thursday, and I think we have some time, but they expressed concern for the Saratoma fireworks show. And I do understand there's a couple of things. The first was the business opportunity. I guess it used to be downtown, and when they'd have it at Saratoma, it pretty much, people crowd the streets and then go home. When you were able to do it in downtown, people went into the businesses, wandered around, spent money in the town, and I understand that. Also, the fact that they talk a lot about the noise in the city, just, you know, people with PTSD or with dogs, or just some of the issues that they brought up, and I get it, but more focused on the business part. One of the things that I did agree with was we are a UAS community, and they talked about if we could look into doing the drone shows, and I think that would be pretty neat and kind of set us apart. So I said I'd look into that. I don't know, even know where to start, but I think it's a good idea, and I mean, you got ones that, like, spit fire now, so it's not a boring, you know, just drones in the air. So I think maybe talk to you about that, Dana, if you have any opportunity. Other than that, Mr. Grasser, I wanted to publicly thank him. I've had a couple, you know, issues, not like people parking cars on their front lawn, but road signs that have been maybe missed or something that was just the citizens didn't like. His team went out within 12 hours and then assessed it and made a choice to make a decision on those things and take action. So he's making me look good, and just I wanted to thank him for him and his team, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Friedols. I do have, that's, I think that's the first time Mr. Grasser's ever been publicly thanked for anything. So I'm glad you got to hear at least once before you retire, so that's great to hear. Let's see, I got to get back. You got, Mr. Veen, any comments this evening?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
All right. Vice President Weigle, please.
I just thank you to Maureen and her staff and everybody for the work on the budget. Mayor, same thing for you. Thanks for your work on the budget. I know there's a lot, and I think we're in a good position, and just need to keep pushing forward.
Thank you, Mr. Weigle. President Sandy, please.
Yeah. I got to second that, and I got to shout out to my buddy Joe Dewey, who's stuck around tonight, who stopped by and had a good chat with me last week talking about the budget, and I really appreciate the efforts that all of the city reps do for the employees. I think tonight was an interesting hash-making session that, to the likes, that I haven't really seen in my 14 years of doing budget-making, mostly over the last few years because Weber wouldn't let anyone else talk. And so it's refreshing that we all got to put in some input. And I think the discussion tonight shows that we're doing this the right way. We're not making these decisions ahead of time. We're actually, although we have had discussions, I never asked anyone to vote any particular way, and nobody asked me to vote a particular way. We all got to come, express our opinions the way we're supposed to, and vote, and we're all going to walk away from this still being colleagues and hopefully friends, and I think that makes for better government and is really the way we're supposed to do it. I have to say, Ms. Berg, I'm glad you and Mr. Phelan made it to Northland Rescue Mission. I owe Sue Shirk an apology, and I have apologized to her already, and I'm meeting with her at noon on Thursday. If anyone who either didn't have the opportunity or forgot about the Thursday meeting like I did, and so I'll eat a little crow on that, and so I just, it was one of those, I blanked it. So I'm going to meet with her Thursday at noon if anyone else is interested in showing up. I drove most of the city today trying to get from my office to here and was amazed, astounded at the amount of road construction we have going on in our community. I did take 17th Avenue South for, from Columbia Road to South Washington, and that's one where I'm almost not convinced it should be open because there were so many spots where they were fixing or preparing to pour concrete around the manholes. I'm glad it was open because traffic was moving, and generally speaking, people were froggering out of each other's way, so I'm glad it was open. And I think that ultimately, I appreciate the people are being patient and are recognizing that we're doing the best we can to get as much done as we possibly can. Mr. Mayor, I do also have someone that is a perpetual parker on their front yard, right around the corner from my house. It was a single-family home that I can only guess that due to a ruling of the Board of Adjustments was allowed to be turned into a duplex. You can't really tell it's a duplex, but I know it's a duplex, and ultimately, the approval process for changing a single-family home that's in an R1 to a duplex doesn't come before planning and zoning. It doesn't ever come before the City Council of the City of Grand Forks. Because it's nonconforming, it goes directly to the Board of Adjustments, and they make the decision. And so there are all sorts of homes throughout our community that were built as single-family homes that have become multifamily homes, well, not by our definite, twin homes or duplexes, and nobody, not anyone in Ward 2 has ever heard about it. Nobody in Ward 1 knows. Nobody in Ward 6 ever hears because it goes to Board of Adjustments. I disagree with that process. I think if we were going to be changing the density of a neighborhood, at a minimum, it should go through planning and zoning. I believe it should also go through City Council. That will take a change to our city ordinance. Unless anyone has a problem with that, I would like to continue to, continue the discussions that I've had with the city attorney about making that change. I don't think it's something that needs to be done tomorrow, but I think throughout into this fall, it'd be nice to get that done, Mayor. And, Mr. Mayor, kudos. Good job on the budget. You worked really hard, and you could tell that you were a man of your convictions, so I appreciate all the efforts. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, President Sandy. I think enforcement on people parking on their lawns will be a big thing this week, and next week, dealing with people who got tickets for parking on their own property will be the conversation, but that is the nature of this. Just want to thank everybody for the work. I mean, going through this budget, 500 pages plus, it's a challenge, and everyone has different wants, and I think we got a good mix of taking care of our city employees, looking to the future, investing in infrastructure, quality of life, but first and foremost, public safety. And I'm happy to see that continue. So just want to thank everybody for their work, and I won't belabor it any further, so looking for a motion to adjourn.
I move adjournment.
Motion for Ms. Oselsky, second from Mr. Friedols. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. We are adjourned.